Good evening. It being a minute past six P M on Tuesday, December fourteenth, twenty twenty one, I hereby convene this meeting of the Westboro Select Board. This meeting is in hybrid format as posted, so pursuant to chapter twenty of the Acts of twenty twenty one. This meeting will be conducted in person and via remote means in accordance with applicable law. This means that members of the public body as well as members of the public may access the meeting in person or via virtual means. In-person attendance will be at the meeting location that has been listed on the agenda here in Town Hall, and it is possible that any or all members of the public body may attend remotely with in-person attendance consisting of members of the public. This meeting may also be accessed remotely via the Zoom link that was provided on the agenda as posted on the town website. When required by law or allowed by the chair, persons wishing to provide public comment or otherwise participate in the meeting may do so by in-person attendance or by accessing the meeting remotely, as noted above. Additionally, the meeting will be broadcast live in real time, thank you, thanks to Westboro TV on Verizon Cable Channel twenty eight and Charter Channel one ninety two and on their online platforms, westburrowtv.org and youtube.com/westboroughtv. If everyone is willing and able, for those who are willing and able, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with unity and justice for all.
Okay, and just as a reminder, as we work through the meeting today, given that we are masked, feedback from the folks watching at home, it's very important that we speak very well into the microphone. I don't know who watched the Charlie Brown cartoons growing up, but we don't want to sound like the teachers with the wah-wah-wah. Okay, that said, first item on the agenda is open forum. Do we have anyone present who wishes to speak or anyone remotely wishing to speak by open forum? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the town manager's report.
Thanks. So, in my office and the finance department are working to complete the FY twenty-three budget due to the proposed increase later this evening. You'll, we'll be presenting a budget preview to the board, and then the budget is due to everyone, to this board as well as the advisory finance committee on Tuesday, December twenty first, per the charter, and that will also be available on the town website. Related to the American Rescue Plan money or ARPA, the finance director put out a request for quotes from consulting firms to support our use of the ARPA funds specifically around eligibility and reporting. Yesterday, we interviewed representatives from Clifton, Larson, Allen, and were recommending the town sign a contract with the firm, so we've asked them to attend next week's meeting to meet all of you and ask you to support or to execute a contract. We did implement the mask mandate in municipal buildings, which was effective December first. I did that in consultation with the public health director and emergency management director, and that was specific to Town Hall, the Ford Municipal Building, the library, senior center, fire department, and D P W, regardless of vaccination status, and this was due to recent, or response to recent increases in COVID nineteen cases in Westboro surrounding communities and Worcester County. We're, we'll continue to monitor the data, but at this point, our expectation is that we would remove the masks January ninth, which would be post, which would be that one week post-holiday season. Our employee excellence award winner for November was Ray, is Ray Gauthier. He's our sanitarian, and also he served as our interim health director for a period of time, so well deserved. In the Department of Public Works, Maya awarded the D P W a twelve hundred dollar grant to purchase equipment lifts. The lifts allow lawn mowers and similar equipment to be safely elevated in order to perform maintenance. They're also reporting that the fall road sweeping is complete. Biannual road sweeping is required as part of the town storm, stormwater permit. The D P W welcomed mechanic Mike Havelati as a new team member. And the public, thanks to the D P W staff who assisted with the preparation for an execution of the downtown holiday lighting event, including electrical upgrades, banner hanging, rotary cleaning, Santa delivery, and trash pickup, so they really appreciate the cooperation between the many different organizations, specifically the Rotary and the Recreation The Board of Health voted to issue a facial covering slash vaccine advisory during their December sixth meeting due to the increase of confirmed positive cases in Westboro surrounding communities and Worcester County, so that has been advertised and sent out, thanks to the superintendent for sending that out through the schools. It's also been advertised on social media through various venues. The State's Contract Tracing Collaborative ended on November thirtieth, so we're now doing all of the contract tracing in the office, so our staff is doing that, and I know they're also working very closely with the school nurses. Proud to announce that even with limited resources and staff, they've held multiple pediatric COVID nineteen clinics for ages five to eleven. As of this week, we've immunized six hundred and twenty-one children, and will continue to run those clinics through the end of February. The Health Department proposed a local vacant property bylaw. I had mentioned this in the previous town manager report, which will help control any nuisance properties and to ensure that they're secure, so that'll come to you at a meeting to your consideration, and eventually we'd need to be on a town meeting warrant. Jim Frederick is our public health nurse, and his position is funded through the grant received from the Greater Boroughs for Health, the Health Department. He's been a positive addition to the team, so he's doing all of the vaccinations in those pediatric health clinics. He's working right outside the Select Board office. Related, in the planning department, sixty sixty-four Otis Street, which is the Atlantic Management, in November, the, the planning board approved the site plan for sixty sixty-four Otis Street for Atlantic Management to construct a new fulfillment center. The hundred and fifty thousand square foot warehouse facility will be a same-day delivery hub for the Metro West region. The project is currently beginning site work. The approval includes the construction of a portion of the B wall, multi-use path extending from sixty Otis through fifty Otis to the existing sidewalk along Otis Street leading to the M B T A station. Sixty-six Otis is the Cold Harbor Brewing property. The planning board also approved that in November. The brewery will relocate from its current location with a full-service restaurant in its new location. You had that before you did our inside plan. And then at one sixty-five Flanders Road, E G America, the Cumberland Farms parking expansion, which also came before you, the proposed expansion is a current parking area at Cumberland Farms, includes the construction of approximately one hundred standard employee parking spaces and additional ADA parking, includes a sidewalk connecting the new parking area to the rest of the facility with landscape and lighting improvements, and so all, copies of all of those are available on the planning department website. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, and congratulations to Ray for winning the award, definitely well deserved. Next on the agenda is item number four. I'll turn the floor over to Christie. It's a vote to concur with an appointment to the Disability Commission.
Yeah, so we're actually going to pass over this this evening.
Okay, we'll pass over that. Okay, so next on the agenda, we have a public hearing continuance. Do we need to open public hearing for this, or?
It's continued.
It's a continuance?
It's continued, so it should be.
So we can go forward without waiting until six thirty? Okay, so.
Well, no, you should wait till six thirty.
We'll wait till six thirty. Okay, so we'll come back to that. So next up, I'm, I'm glad everyone came here early tonight. This is moving forward, so, oh, don't jinx it. Item six on the agenda is the stormwater permit update, and so we've got our team from our D P W director and consultants.
Good evening. Chris Pant, Director of Public Works. Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. We are here to provide an update, so we're not asking for any decisions or votes. We just want to give an update on our MS four permit. We've referred to that permit quite often in various forums, particularly when we're talking about money, and so we just wanted to give the board and anybody who's listening an update on why that thing is so important. So I'm here, obviously, you can see Derek is with me online. We also have Lisa and Joe from the D P W, the engineering staff, or town engineer and assistant town engineer, and then we also have Bill and Eric from Fussin' O'Neil, who should be online, I hope.
Because we're running a little early, I don't see folks yet, but Joe is online.
Okay. They should be signing on any minute now, and I will tap dance until it happens because they are presenting on our behalf.
Do you, do you want to do the M G B update while we're late for them, or do you want to keep going?
Yeah, we can do the master general bring them update.
Okay.
Why not wait till everyone can be on so that you can go through the presentation? Okay. Okay, so, um, over the last couple of weeks, we were contacted and had reached back out to Chris Philbin, a representative from Mass General Brigham, to get an update on the status of the planned expansion in Westboro and the determination of need process.
Alan, could you just, I know we use acronyms a lot, could you just speak to what M G B is, just in case public gets things?
So, M G B is Mass General Brigham, and it's the proposed integrative healthcare facility up along Route nine by four ninety-five. And as folks may remember, that whenever there's healthcare facilities being added that offer certain services, the Mass Department of Public Health has a process for evaluating the determination of need to make sure that there's not, I guess, an oversupply of services or provision of services in a way that would affect the overall healthcare offering and service availability and cost for the region. Part of the desire to get an update is a lot has happened since this matter was last before the board, and we provided public comment and an op-ed piece in Commonwealth Magazine in support of the project. Most notably is the determination of need process was modified specifically for this project to include outside independent cost analysis studies to be done by independent examiners. That work is at or near completion. Let me just pull up. Okay. In that, it was expected that it might actually be submitted back to Mass Department of Public Health as early as today. I've not heard if that's happened. When the independent cost assessment work is done, it triggers another thirty-day comment period in which Department of Public Health can solicit further input from parties on record with the determination of need application, so it's a limited set. I'll also mention, and you have a copy of this in your packet, that Massachusetts Attorney General Maury Healy filed written testimony with the Massachusetts Health Policy Commission, not D P H, challenging certain aspects of the determination of need application. You have a copy of that in the packet that you were able to read. You know, a reminder to the public that we chose during the comment period to restate our public support for the proposal. Another factor that's come into play on November seventeenth, the Massachusetts House of Representatives passed a bill, two numbers, H forty-two fifty-three and H forty-two sixty-two, as amended, an act to enhance the market review process. This makes pretty sweeping changes to the determination of need process statewide, and one component of it that's of particular concern to the Mass General Brigham project in Westboro is that the provisions are retroactive, specifically tied to the dates of this project. And so it, it appears to, you know, have an ex post facto component. State Rep Danielle Reglare, on her behalf, did file an amendment to improve the legislation and strike the retroactive application to pending determination of needs that are in process, but the amendment was not adopted. So currently, that, that document, that, that bill has now moved over to the Senate, and I assume as they come back from break, it will be handled in committee and debated on the Senate floor. And so the, you know, so that's sort of where we are right now. You know, Mass General Brigham is concerned that the rules are changing in a way that could very specifically end this project and others that they have planned, and obviously they're hoping for our continued support. So, we're not, can, we're not technically a party of interest on the determination of need application. That's more, you know, it's much more limited in scope than general public comment, but we could, at our option, you know, further publicly reiterate our support. Additionally, if we're so inclined, we could draft a letter to our current and our future representative in the state senate, asking them to amend the proposed legislation to remove the ex post facto provision. I mean, I'm sure Mass General Brigham has other provisions that they'd like to see changed as well, but the ex post facto is probably the most critical because it, it changes the rules so late in the game. So I put that out there as an update. If it's something that we wanted to do, I'd be happy to take the initiative to draft a memo that could be reviewed and approved at our meeting next week.
Yeah, I mean, I personally would like that, and I'd like to reach out to our state senators as well, maybe even back to our state reps, and I, I think this is, I think it's horrible, quite honestly. I think what, as I read it, and what I want to ask the reps, because they know the legalese better than I do in Acts, but it basically, as I understand it, allows existing hospitals, UMass Memorial, a veto power of anybody else coming into this area, which I just think is, when you think about capitalism and competition, it just, it just makes no sense in service to our residents, so it, instead of inspiring others to, to do better and to be more cost-efficient, it basically allows them to carry on and in essence have a monopoly in the region, which I just think is unfair to, and to our residents. And I think specifically to the House bill with the retroactive nature, I just think that is, you know, targeted and, and unfair, and I, so I definitely support us, from my perspective, reiterating our position. We've, I've heard loud and clear, I know we've talked about it from residents here that support that, so I'm fully still in support of it because that's the, what I've heard from residents in town, and I just think that we should support there, we should, and we should ask to speak to our senators and ask for their support in defeating this. Both the retroactive nature, I just think the whole piece to it needs to be reworked because I just think it is unfair to, to allow for one institution to monopolize the area. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I would agree. I think that does appear to be, you know, from, from reading all these documents, you know, what is happening here, and you would wonder how any future hospital services would be built in this state if any other local hospital could just veto them. That seems arbitrary. I would be support in some sort of article, supportive of that.
So I'll echo that support and, for a, a letter of support, and I do find it sort of at a loss for words in how frustrated I am that the House would take this action. I've had personal experience with family members waiting months to get an appointment with a primary care physician, individuals who are critically in need of care, and, and I'll say that they are not part of the M G B system, they're part of other systems. So there's a need for primary care, specialty care, to service all of our community, and I think it's a political power play, and I think it's ridiculous, and I think it's unnecessary to Ian's point. I think that, you know, I mean, I think competition builds, you know, creates opportunity for communities, and I think it creates an opportunity for services to improve and to be offered more broadly to residents. So I don't see a downside here. I also think it's, you know, with all due respect to a great system at UMass, and I've used their service, and a lot of people do, and they have, you know, they have a great medical school, they had the opportunity to create a, a pro, you know, an ambulatory-type center here. There's no reason why, and I think it's, I just, I think it's ridiculous. I will also say that I do think we have to have a very strong letter to our state senator, current state senator, because Senator Eldridge has come out in strong support of, of the Attorney General's statements and, and the path that it, the, you know, the House bills are currently on. I'm not, I'm, I'm not familiar with where Senator Moore stands at this time.
Yeah, I would echo a lot of what has been said here. I'll just, I did prepare some remarks on this because I, I think this is a super important topic to our community. First, I'd like to say that I feel that our past votes in support of this might have been a little bit premature. I'm not saying that I would not still vote the way I did, but I feel that the additional perspective of both the D O N and the I C A would have provided the board more education to make our, you know, our decisions. I would also say, from what I can tell, the House resolution for an act to enhance the market review process appears to be state-supported monopoly by enabling a dominant market leader to have a significant say in what competition comes to their market. I also say that I'm thankful to the Attorney General and her office for having right in, written the testimony challenging certain aspects of the M G B, M G B application. All that said, I feel that we, as a community, are being left a little bit in the dark by opposing sides. Alan, you had mentioned that, I didn't read, but maybe you have more information than me in regards to the I C A being part of the D O N. I didn't read that, I thought they were two separate things, and I would love to understand when we're going to get that information from the state on the department, on the determination need and the I C A from M G B, and I would ask that the board hold off on any letter, not saying that I'm not going to support it. to support it, but I would hold off on any letter until we get to that point where we've got those two pieces of information, because I think they're vital. I've been asking for that determine, at least an idea of when the determination of the need since the spring, since our first vote on this last spring. So I'm hopeful that we can get some clarity on when those are going to happen, so that we have as much information as possible, so we can write the best letter possible for our argument right now in support of it.
Okay. I hear what you're saying. I have, I guess I would suggest that, given that the submission of the independent cost analysis and cost assessments is due presently, I would suggest we draft a memo, and we can decide whether or not we're ready to act at next meeting, simply because of the timing and having it out prior to any decisions being made by committee or in the senate. There's a time element there.
Right.
I appreciate you mentioning the Attorney General's report. The most, you know, salient point I got out of that report was the footnote where the Attorney General acknowledged that she shows not to use any of the requested information that was provided by Mass General Brigham in evaluating her criticism. And so she acknowledges in her footnotes that this is deliberately a one-sided perspective, which, to be perfectly honest, I believe it's somewhat of a betrayal of the public trust, given her role and her, and the Attorney General's office typical role in this process. I think that was, you know, personally, politically motivated and somewhat inappropriate, as you said, until the facts and the independent analysis, you know, were to come in.
Do we have an idea, if I can speak in?
Yep.
Do we have any idea when the determination of need is expected?
Well, if, knowing that once the cost assessments come in, there's another 30-day period for comment, the determination need would be sometime after that.
After that.
After that, yeah.
So...
The cost, the independent cost assessment was a modification to the determination of need process for this project.
The reason why I ask is, I think, you know, as the rest of the board is aware, we've received some letters from the community who have expressed concerns over the equity of this. And I see a more valid argument around that portion of it than the argument of one business coming into another business's market. I think that that is completely fair, it's part of the way we do, you know, McDonald's can't say Burger King can't be on the next corner, right? You can't do that. So, but I think that the determination of need will help us a lot in regards to that equity question, as to whether or not this is siphoning off high-paying customers.
So technically, is my understanding, the determination of need is looking at the need among Mass General Brigham's existing patient population.
And in the area itself.
No, that the determination of need is, for this type of facility, is, will it help serve their existing base? Given the concern about the side effects and equity, the independent cost assessments were commissioned to address that aspect of the issue. And I agree that equity's an issue. I also remain very concerned that, even after being provided with accurate information, spokespeople for the UMass system are still misrepresenting facts about Westboro and the facilities. And even in a more recent op-ed piece in Commonwealth Magazine, Dr. Brown continues to make the false claim that this facility is not accessible by public transportation, and he actually states that there aren't enough people of color in Westboro to warrant this facility. I will point out that, according to the US Census, who tracks this information for us as of 2019, 35% of our population is BIPOC, is people of color. And so I'm not sure, maybe it's the wrong, he thinks we have the wrong type of people of color to warrant, you know, additional medical facilities or not, but it's extremely frustrating and disappointing that that is their public relations tactic on this. And I will publicly challenge Dr. Brown, who published the editorials. I will be happy to meet you in the Rotary any morning at 7:30, and if you can take public transportation and make it to a 9:00 AM appointment at any three of the UMass medical campuses, your choice, by 9:00 AM, I will donate $100 to the charity of your choice. I, in turn, will use public transportation to get to the land which will be the host of this facility, hopefully, and I bet I will get there first. So, that said, is there concurrence to draft a letter? It will be reviewed and discussed and possibly voted on next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't, I don't think we need a formal vote.
No, we'll just bring the letter.
I think it's important to have the letter ready, just given the timing of everything.
Yeah.
Just because of our meetings, and because we moved up our meeting.
Right.
Yeah.
But I do agree with the fact, I mean, and the comment period doesn't start until the independent cost analysis comes out. If it's not out by the next meeting, we really can't say anything in common to it, so.
And I'm just hopeful that determination of need comes out kind of the same time.
No, it'll be, it'll be, it's delayed.
It'll be after that 30 days, I believe.
Yeah.
But do you think the ICA is important?
It is.
And will give us some context.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, then we'll move forward with that. Okay, are we ready for the stormwater update?
It's 6:30, so you have to...
Oh, it's 6:30, so we get to do the public hearing continuance.
So this is the continued public hearing for an all-alcohol license for Asian Paradise Inc. doing business at South Sea Village. This came before you a few months ago, and they requested that the hearing be continued to this evening. They have actually requested an additional continuance to your meeting in March. The board, at this point, you have the option of approving the license, allowing for the continuance to March, or you could deny the license at this point. One of the reasons for their request for the continuance is that they haven't really moved forward in terms of their work with other departments for the building and Board of Health, things like that. So, my recommendation, I did provide you with some comments from Town Council about how you could move forward, but those are really your three options. You have received a request in writing, and so you could continue it to the March meeting.
I would make a motion to move to continue the local license hearing for Asian Paradise doing business at South Sea Village to March 22nd, 2022.
Actually, can you also give a time?
6:30 PM.
Perfect, thanks.
And I'll second that. Moved and seconded, any count discussion?
Yes.
Shall we?
So I'm in support of the motion, but I do want to speak to my disappointment in the lack of information that was provided as to the, at least that I read, as to why the continuance of this is needed or the extension. Honestly, I think it's pretty, it's, I want to welcome businesses here, but I think that they need to take those commitments seriously, and when they start that process, and I'm pretty disappointed that we're having to extend that without a lot of reason. So, I'm supportive of doing that because I want to see them be successful, but I won't be in favor of extending it another time.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Patrick?
Yeah, just a question. This doesn't change our, we're not, we're intentionally not reserving a license here, right? So this doesn't impact, your concern is purely that it's been delayed now.
Well, yeah, I mean, it was just, can we have an extension?
Yeah.
I mean, unless you guys read something different in the packet.
No, no, no.
There was no support for the why, you know, it's funding, it's...
But we're not holding anything back, like if we had other businesses in the town.
Right, it hasn't been awarded to them, so.
That's correct.
Okay.
Right, yes, thank you for that.
Okay. No further questions or comments, we'll call the vote, all in favor. Motion passes 5-0, five being present. Okay, third time's a charm. Mr. Pant, stormwater permit update.
We're joined tonight with representatives from Fuston O'Neill, Eric Moss, and Bill Gunther. They're online, and I'll hand it over to them shortly. They're just going to give, as I said earlier, a quick update on our MS4 permit. So Bill assures me he'll be done with under 10 minutes, and then we'll have a few minutes at the end to answer or discuss anything that comes up during this session. So Bill, I'm handing it over to you. Thank you.
So I apologize if you can hear the echo from the room. So I'm here to give you an update on the town of Westboro's stormwater management program and give you a very brief review of the MS4 program, sort of a starter. So to understand where the town is with the stormwater program first, we need to understand what stormwater is and why it's important to the town. Stormwater is, every time it rains or we have snowmelt, it goes in our catch basins, as you can see on the upper left, and is delivered via a stormwater system to our local waterways. In its design, it's meant to convey that stormwater and move it efficiently off our roads to make it safe to drive, but it can also cause some problems. And why stormwater is important, important, it can cause localized flooding, damage infrastructure. Stormwater carries pollutants, so we want it to be as free from pollutants as possible. And then, on a good note, infiltrating stormwater if replenishes are drinking water supplies. So what is the MS4 permit that the town has to comply with? This is an EPA permit. MS4 stands for permissible separate storm sewer system, one S and, one M and four S's, sorry. And it includes all the storm drainage system owned and operated by the municipality, the state or federal agency, but in your case, municipality, that discharges to surface waters in the United States. Regulated small MS4s are located partially or entirely within urbanized areas, which is defined by census, which we just had. One, in the map on the right-hand side, you can see the urbanized areas across the state of Massachusetts, so not all of the areas of every town are part of the regulated area, just the urbanized areas according to those census. The MS4 permit, it's for discharging stormwater to your system. It's combined of perpetual five-year permits administered jointly by EPA and Mass DEP. In Massachusetts, there's over 200 regulated MS4 communities. The permit is meant to reduce discharge of pollutants to the maximum extent practicable. And you can see the map on the right-hand side of the screen. The majority of Westboro falls within the regulated area of the permit. You do have some areas that fall outside of the regulated area and are not organized. And you have additional sensitivities through contributions to the Asavet and Sudbury rivers, where you are as the headwaters of both of those watersheds. So what is the town doing to comply with this permit that's jointly administered by EPA and DEP? The permit is comprised of six minimum control measures, and the town has its stormwater management program, which is available on the DPW website, there'll be a link on the following slide. But the permit is comprised of these six minimum control measures: public participation, involvement, public education, I'm sorry, public involvement. Three is illicit discharge detection and elimination. Four, construction site discharge controls. And five, post-construction controls for new development. And then, minimum control measure number six is good housekeeping and pollution prevention. So minimum control, minimum control measure number one includes public education, so as part of the permit, town municipalities that have regulated areas have requirements for education and outreach messaging. The town meets many of those requirements through education outreach messaging on the town website, which you can see the link provided here, and also through social media engagement on the town's social media channels. Minimum control measure number two is the public involvement measure, and this is primarily where the public gets involved with the program, through being able to review annual reports, which the town has to do every year, and through storm drainage sensing. This is also where the town takes credit for other involvement of the public, either through river cleanup days or recycling days, stuff like that. Minimum control measure number three, illicit discharge detection and elimination. This is one of the larger areas of the permit. This is where you really prevent pollutants from entering your stormwater system. It includes requirements for specific storm system mapping and asset management that needs to be done. It involves dry weather inspection of all of the outfalls that are within the regulated area, of which the town of Westboro has over 500 outfalls that fall within this program. It includes sampling for all dry weather flow found with those outfalls. It also involves catchment investigations further along down the line, which includes more inspection and sampling. Minimum control measure number four, construction site runoff. That is where the town has requirements for site plan reviews, of which last year the town completed 117. Construction site inspections, the town completed 390 of these inspections last year. Minimum control measure number five, post-construction stormwater management includes such things as ASVIL plan reviews, which there were 94 of those done last year, street and parking lot design guideline updates, retrofit inventories and implementation, and inspection of private water quality devices. And finally, minimum control measure number six, is the good housekeeping control measure. This is where street sweeping and catch basin clean and winter de-icing operations are involved. Last year, the town swept over 190 miles of streets, collecting and disposing of 171 cubic yards of sweepings, and inspected and cleaned between 1,500 and 3,500 catch basins over the last two years. So now to the part that I'm sure you're more interested in, is how much does this program cost? So those minimum control measures all have cost. And the way we broke it down for you is to give you understanding. So obviously, you have all those things that I just talked about the town has to comply with. Each year of the permit, there are specific requirements that the town has to comply with, as well as requirements that carry over year over year, like street sweeping and catch basin cleaning. Upcoming permit compliance items include stormwater bylaw regulation updates, street design and parking lot guideline updates, detailed storm system mapping upgrades, illicit discharge outfall monitoring, although the town has over 500 outfalls, it has to monitor and sample if there's dry weather flow, and stormwater retrofit planning. Ongoing annual requirements, the street sweeping and catch basin cleaning, those are two of the main ones. Drainage system operation and maintenance, just regular maintenance of the system where pieces of the system may degrade over time, they have to be repaired and replaced, and then annual reported, reporting, annual training, and education and outreach. And all this wrapped up usually provides typical annual program costs between $250,000 and $500,000 annually for communities of the same size and with the same amount of assets to manage as Westboro. So how is Westboro controlling those costs and providing additional benefits? And I think this is really the key takeaways we'd like to leave you with tonight. They're taking a cost-effective approach to permit compliance. This is a permit they have to comply with. Again, this is something that is administered by the federal government in Massachusetts based jointly with DEP. But the town of Westboro is creating capacity by decentralizing responsibilities and improving staff awareness. So in many communities that we work with, a lot of times what happens is this is made the sole responsibility of, let's say, the DPW director, and nobody else really touches the programs. In Westboro's case, the team of professionals that are working on stormwater is what you would prefer to see when managing a program like this. It involves everybody from DPW to conservation. We've met with people in IT, have been a part of our trainings. So decentralizing that management of the program helps give everybody a little piece and save the town money over time. The second way, Westboro is making their dollars go further, is partnering with a consultant to augment staff resources and provide training and provide additional expertise. So we have been working with the town now for a few months, and the approach we take with our clients and the one we're taking with Westboro is to empower your staff to take on as much responsibility for this and provide training to them to understand the permit and to take on these responsibilities on their own, rather than just lop off pieces of this and pay a consulting director. of this and pay a consultant directly. The town is also using that opportunity to train staff to use tablets for field data collection and system asset management, which is going to take this program and make it much more efficient in the future. They also have a membership in the Central Massachusetts Regional Stormwater Coalition, where they receive peer learning and regional knowledge base. So through that coalition, which includes on any given year between '28 and '31 communities, through those meetings, they are building off the expertise of all the people who are part of that coalition. And Westboro's been an active member of that coalition for a number of years now. And then lastly, seeking grant opportunities through the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program, Section 319 program, and others to make Westboro's dollars go farther as it pertains to stormwater management. So additional benefits of the MS4 program and this approach, solid understanding of the town's storm drainage system, just in our short time working with DPW, the knowledge that those folks have of their system far exceeds many of the communities that we work with, and this is just going to pay dividends down the road as you manage this system, not just for the permit compliance, but for protecting your local resources. It allows you to identify and correct problems quickly and cost-effectively by knowing your system. The proactive system operation and maintenance prevents larger-scale disasters through localized flooding events. You're able to more nimbly address capacity and drainage issues before they occur, and you're better prepared for more intense and frequent storms, and protecting drinking water quality and recharging obstacles. So I think I probably rushed through that a little faster than 10 minutes, but we wanted to leave time for folks to be able to ask questions.
Okay. Thank you very much for the presentation. I will open up to the board for any questions or comments. You go ahead.
So this question is actually to you, Kristi, or where would we see that annual amount? Is it solely in the budget of DPW or because of our decentralized model? Is that spread across multiple departments, or can you speak to that?
Sure, I mean, I think Chris can too. Yeah, so I mean, it is in the DPW, and then, you know, we've talked about creating a stormwater utility fund that would, you know, have to be set up eventually.
So I guess first, you know, a number was shown on the slide, and it's a sizable number, I think. And we debated about what to show, and so we let, you know, them, based on their experiences, you know, Bill and Eric put a number on there, we agreed to that. So it's a reflection of what other communities are doing, and some communities aren't necessarily taking the same approach, they just source it all out to a consultant, and some of that high, probably the high end of that number is probably including some of those numbers. Where the number is, it's in our budget. And, well, it is to a degree, because there's still some that needs to be added. We're not proposing tonight that we need to add, you know, $250,000 to our budget, but it is important to highlight that there are needs, and some were just highlighted. And it's a five-year permit, and we're in year four, so there's still more stuff coming, and we know what those things are, and so we're trying to project them, and that is captured in our budget as we, you know, move things forward. So, not sure if I answered your question completely, but that's the gist.
Thank you.
Ian?
This was really helpful to me, so I appreciate that. I guess the question I have is, in going through all this, are there any, kind of related to the budget thing, are there any deficiencies that we should be aware of, anything that you're focused on to ensure that, A, we're meeting current permit, but it sounds like we're in the process now of renewing it for the next five years at the end of next year, I guess? So I guess, is there anything that we should be doing that we're not doing, or things that we're not doing as well as we should be per the current permit?
Bill and Eric, I'll just, we didn't rehearse this or anything, and so you guys, but I'll let you, you know, answer straightly, because it's helpful to know. And you can answer, I'll provide an answer from my perspective, but if you guys have any comments here, welcome to chime in, and then I'll make a couple comments.
So I'll start, Eric, you can fill in where I leave gaps. The first thing I would like to mention is that it's a five-year permit, but there was a previous iteration of this permit that was put out in 2003 that was administratively extended year over year, and I think ended up lasting over 13 years. So this is not a permit that just lasts for five years and then they give you another iteration. This one is probably going to be with us for at least 10 years, would be my guess. The permit has different provisions in it that extend out that far, and it would not surprise me that it extended further than that. So requirements, just because we're in year four now doesn't mean we don't have other stuff that has to be done. So catchment investigations, for example, have a timeframe of seven and 10 years to be completed. In terms of deficiencies, I would say, or progress, I would say the town of Westboro is well-positioned right now to be in full permit compliance by the end of year four. Just the work of the short time that Eric and I have been working with the community, they're doing a ton of stuff right and excelling in a number of areas, and I think over the next year, we'll shore up some of the places where we see a few gaps, particularly in the IDU. So I mentioned that the town has a requirement to inspect and sample any with flow, all of the outfalls in town, there's 500 outfalls. So these are where the stormwater conveyance enters streams. There's over 500 of these, and every one of those, somebody has to go put eyes on it, fill out information using their tablets on what they see there, and then if there's flow during dry weather, presumably that could be polluted runoff or pollution entering the stream, so they need to sample that. And so that has obviously costs associated with it, but obviously also the expense of just that undertaking of actually putting yourself in front of 500 pieces of infrastructure.
I would just add to what Bill said, that, you know, our firm works for a lot of towns across the state and throughout the region, and, you know, Bill and I work with many of those towns directly. When we reviewed Westboro's existing programs, we were extremely impressed with how much work the town had completed and accomplished, you know, over the past few years, you know, to meet most of the requirements of this permit. So I think the town's in great shape. We are, in addition to the illicit discharge work that Bill mentioned, our firm is also reviewing and helping the town update its local regulations to comply with the regulatory requirements of the permit. So looking at the stormwater bylaw and developing some new regulations to go along with that bylaw is one of the tasks that we're working on currently with the team. That's one of the other areas that, you know, that Chris and his group are aware of, where the town needs to, you know, make some changes to be in compliance by end of year four.
Yeah, and I'll just add, so, I mean, Bill and Eric were complimentary in their presentation, which is great, and we appreciate that, but this isn't about us kind of patting ourselves on the back. I mean, one of the first things we asked them to do was a gap analysis, so look at everything we're supposed to be doing or should have done already, and tell us where we're not done or where we're not entirely complete. So we have this big, huge spreadsheet, I mean, he covered a kind of, some big tasks, but there's really a whole bunch of tasks, and we've identified all of them and which ones we're behind on and which ones we're not. And then we're using that as a, you know, to prioritize our work. And so, just for example, the illicit detection, meaning looking at all these outfalls that he mentioned, before you can go inspect an outfall or even test it, you have to find it, and then you have to clear away, you know, debris that might have collected there for years and years. So we wanted to be very deliberate about our process, and in some cases, we didn't necessarily meet the mark, but we met it, I mean, we were upfront about that, and we reported that, and, you know, but we want to do it properly. And so we do have gaps, but nothing that's, you know, an immediate showstopper, an emergency or crisis for the town, it's just things that we're a little bit behind on, that we're catching up on, and that's what they were alluding to.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Patrick?
Yeah, I'll just say, I took a look at a lot of the content that was out on the town's website, and I found it very informational, very thorough, so I appreciate that. I learned a lot, reading through much, but probably not all of that material, because there's quite a bit. You answered a portion of my question in regards to the illicit discharges. Maybe I'm just not piecing this together, the permit process and the illicit discharges, is that something that, like, on an annual basis has to be measured, or is that something over the four, five-year period that gets measured, and there's a summary report that occurs that we as a town would understand how we're doing against it? Is that the result of it? And if that is, when would we expect to see the illicit discharge results to understand how we are doing with pollution in our stormwater drains?
Eric or Bill, I'm gonna let you answer that first.
So the dry weather inspection requirement was a year-three requirement, to have all outfalls inspected by year three. We just completed a training with DPW's staff to be able to go do those inspections now, and I have the utmost confidence of them to be able to finish your inspections post-haste. It's again, compliance with that. Once the inspections are complete, any that have flowed during dry weather need to be sampled, and then that initial requirement is done. Then the town is supposed to revisit all outfalls every five years after that as part of the dry weather inspection. The catchment investigations is similar, though different, that's where you are looking not just at the outfall, but incrementally within different catchments. So a catchment are comprised of catch basins that lead to manholes that eventually lead to outfalls. Some catchments, obviously, or maybe not so obviously, involve larger amounts of infrastructure than others, and so what they want you to do is to look at key junctions in those catchments to further parse out any areas of illicit discharges. And illicit discharges, to be clear what they're looking for, anything that's really not stormwater. So sanitary sewer connections, people illegally connecting leach fields, stuff like that is what's being looked for to keep that out of your stormwater system. So there are recurring requirements under IDU. In terms of when they will be finished, they're just getting going on the inspection, and I'll let Chris talk about what they have maybe talked about internally about their schedule. But I think, like I said before, by the end of year four, which is June 30th, they should be well on their way, if not in full compliance with IDU, based on my experience with the town staff who's going to be working on that.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, Ellen, no, thank you. And also, I know, you know, this is an ongoing process, there's things that Westboro citizens can do to help support this process as well, can I name that?
Yep, and that's part of the, you showed that little wheel with six different things on it, public information and, I think, outreach or something like that. So yes, that's part of our effort to educate people, like tonight, on just the fact that there is, we actually do monitor our stormwater, and so, you know, if you spill something in your driveway, you probably need to clean it up, because if you don't, it's going down the driveway into the gutter, and then down into a catch basin, and then ultimately into our water system. So, I mean, that's a very simplistic answer, but those are the kind of things that we try, you know, the dog waste bags that we've talked about many times, that we still find, you know, dozens of these things in catch basins, and there may be people that think that's going to the wastewater treatment plant, it's just going to get thrown away. It's not, it's going right into our water system, or into a wetland, or some other water resource. And so, a big part of it is education and just making sure people know, you know, what exists and where it leads to.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the great update and for the continued work, the leadership, as well as the full staff and team at DPW for making this work and bringing it to fruition.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next on the agenda is the presentation of the library building project, an update. I will put our library director on the spot.
I'm really happy to be here to give you an update on the library renovation and expansion project. I know the last several times that I've been here, it's been more of an update or to inform the board about changes to timelines and things. What I'd like to do tonight is give you kind of an overview of the project. I know there are some new select board members and probably some people watching tonight or watching the replay later who might not be aware of the project. Select board members, I know, are aware of the project, but there may be others in the community who are not, or who don't know the, you know, kind of the background. So I'm going to give you a little bit of the background. For some of you, this will be review, for others, it will be new information, but I hope this will be helpful. So first, I wanted to show you some pretty pictures of the exterior of our building. The library was originally built on the site where it's at, at 55 West Main in 1908. The library actually started in the 1700s, it was in various locations until the building was built as a library in 1908. And that's one of the things that we think is really special about our library, that for 114-ish years, if you went to the library in Westboro, you came to 55 West Main. In 1980, the library was expanded to its current size. It went from about 10,000 square feet to the current 20,000 square feet. And that was a two-story addition, which was the children's room in the lower level and the adult section on the main level. If you fast-forward a few years to our current project, this is kind of a brief overview of the renovation and kind of how this came about. In 2011, we were working on our strategic plan, and it became apparent that through surveys and focus groups with residents, that residents wanted changes and updates to our library. We hired a consultant to do a needs assessment, and her report showed that the building was undersized for its current use in 2011 and for our future needs, looking forward at a 20- to 30-year planning horizon. We then hired an architect to do a full assessment of the building, and his assessment highlighted a number of areas that needed immediate attention, including window replacement, work on our public restroom's flooring, and a whole list of projects. We started to put some of those out for bids and quotes, and we were at town meeting, asking for funds for implementing different projects. The window, we did a window study that came in at around $151,000 just to replace the current wood windows. They're the original 1908 single-pane windows in the old building, just to replace those with aluminum-clad windows, was going to be $151,000. Restroom renovation quotes were around $60,000 each at the time. But right around the same time, the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners, or MBLC, which you'll hear me talk about a lot tonight, MBLC announced planning and design grants for a new upcoming round of construction grants. We decided not to do any of the repair work at the time, since a planning and design grant would help us determine whether we needed to replace our building, whether we needed to renovate, or what the plan forward would be. The result of that process was a document that the MBLC calls the Building Program, and that describes the library that our community needs. You can find that on our website, and that was completed in 2015. Part of that process also included the consideration and investigation of alternate locations, which I'll talk about shortly too. In 2016, we took the Building Program, we narrowed the alternate locations down to a preferred option, and we worked with the architects and the team. And we worked with the architects and the team, the design team, to do a high-level schematic design. We then went to the fall town meeting to ask for permission to apply for a construction grant, which is part of the MBLC process. And that was approved. So we started to prepare our grant application in the fall of 2016. We submitted the grant in January of 2017, and we were notified in July that we would be getting a grant. We would be receiving $9.48 million towards our project. But we were waitlisted for funding. At the time, we were placed at number 11 on the waiting list. About a year later, our consultant at MBLC let us know that we were at least three years out for funding. And last spring, when I came and gave you the update, it was at the time where MBLC had decided not to award any grants for a year due to the COVID-19 shutdowns and cities and towns closing libraries or laying off staff and trying to hold back on projects, bringing projects to town meetings. In July of this year, we moved up to number one on the waiting list because the last two projects above ours, which were Amherst and Melrose, were awarded their grants and both towns approved their projects and are moving forward. So that moved us up to number one on the waiting list. In October, we reformed our library building committee. And we began the process to acquire a new owner's project manager. Our intention was to continue with the same architect, but we do need a new OPM. The deadline for submittals for the OPM project is tomorrow, end of business day. So the proposals are starting to come in. And we anticipate having a new OPM onboard in January of 2022. Once the new OPM is onboard, the plan is to do a little bit of design development to further refine the very high-level schematic design that was produced earlier. But most importantly, to do a new cost estimate. We all know through COVID and the way the last few years have been with supply chain and labor costs, that costs are increasing. So we felt it was really important that the year that our grant was awarded, that we go through the process to do a new cost estimate so that we could go to town meeting with the most accurate numbers. We anticipate our grant will be announced in July of 2022. And once the MBLC awards a grant, the town has six months to approve the project. So that would put us at the October 22 town meeting, looking for the town's approval. Anticipating approval of the project, we would finalize the design, do some of the bidding, and start looking for a temporary location between fall of '22 and fall of '23. The entire library would become a construction site. So staff and patrons would not be able to check out books around construction equipment. We're not sure where the temporary site would be. It just really depends on what's available at the time that we would need it to be vacant. Hopefully, we'd be able to stay in the downtown area, but we'll see when the time comes. We expect that to take about a year, so we would relocate to a temporary site in the fall of '23. And then construction would take about two years. Part of our initial needs assessment was looking at the amount of space we currently have and the amount of space that we need. And my intention with this slide was not to give you like tiny little words to squint at, but what I want you to see, what I want you to see here is the gray boxes are the existing space and the red boxes are the proposed additional space that we need for each function of the building. So the functions that have the biggest red spaces are in the children's, the children's area, the teen area, the main floor adult area, and some of our support and gathering spaces. Support spaces being things like stairs and storage and mechanical. But also, we were extremely deficient in meeting space. Most modern public libraries have meeting spaces like, we call them on our plan, small meeting rooms, but what I would describe as a study room, which is a small room with a table and like two to four chairs, where people can go close the door, do homework, and have quiet space. Those do not exist in the library as it currently is configured. And it's something that patrons have been asking for in our public studies since before my tenure at the library. We're also, our current meeting room by fire code can fit 40 people. As I said, most modern public libraries have a meeting room of around 100. We do not intend to add a 100-person meeting room because steps away, we have a gigantic meeting room in the Forbes Municipal Building. And at the time of the grant application, we included a letter as part of our packet from the previous town manager explaining that the library would have access to the large meeting space in the Forbes building if we needed it for a public program. Typically, the times that we would use a large space like that would be evenings or on the weekend, which would be times that it most likely would not be in use by other town departments. So that allowed us to use the square footage in our building a lot more strategically and not put in a giant meeting room when we have one literally like 10 steps away. So I mentioned as part of the process to write our construction grant, as part of the needs assessment, we had to consider the current building, but we also had to consider other options. And the architects came up with seven different options for our building committee to consider. The first one was just a base repair of the current building to bring it up to code and to fix some of the issues that had been identified in the architect's original assessment. That would maintain our current 20,000 square feet. It did not meet the Building Program requirements for a construction grant from the MBLC. They don't fund repair projects or upgrades to HVAC systems. They'll only do full building projects. And as you see limitations, we would be paying the entire project cost without any assistance from the state. Option two was an addition renovation that would add a third story over the top of the existing 1980 addition. The current 1980 addition was not built to support a third story. So the only way to retain that addition and add additional space over it would be to build something sort of freestanding that would be built over the top of it. So you see on this, this kind of bird's eye view, the red areas are small additions that would be made at the Parkman Street entrance and an exit stairwell, sort of like a fire escape that's enclosed indoors in the back corner of the building. That plan kept the children's room in the lower level. That's the gold color. And it moved the team room down to that space to give it more square footage. The main floor featured a staff workspace, one quiet reading room, and adult materials. The upper floor includes the Westboro Center for History and Culture, which is formerly known as our local history room, and some meeting space. What you will see on each of these plans is that restrooms are added on every floor. If you haven't been in the library lately, we only have two single-person public restrooms on the lower, and both are located on the lower level of the library. So if you're at a meeting on the top floor, if you're anywhere on the main floor, you have a long way to go to get to the restrooms. And that's something that we heard loud and clear from the public. Again, since before my tenure at the library, we need more public restrooms and we need better ones. This project did not meet the requirements from MBLC because the spaces were still deficient, even though we were adding additional space. One of the problems is the existing floor-to-floor dimensions are not adequate enough to add additional mechanical systems like HVAC and plumbing that we need in order to correct the deficiencies and problems in the current building. This plan didn't allow us to fix any of those issues. It also aesthetically was not going to be a pleasing addition to our beautiful historic downtown area. Our third option was demolition, addition, and renovation. That was a three-story addition. That became our preferred option. And I'll get into the specifics about this. This one, of course, did meet the Building Program requirements. It would remove the 1980 addition. The plan would be to excavate down about three feet and start the new three-story addition lower in order to make all the floors match and to increase the floor-to-floor clearances. It would allow us to add the additional mechanical, plumbing, and electrical infrastructure that we badly need. Roof lines would also match and would allow us to strategically hide rooftop mechanical equipment. That would also fit nicely into the historic downtown area. We also considered a four-story addition to allow for the expanded space that we were looking for. And this kept children on the lower level, adults and staff on the main level, and the Westboro Center and the remainder of the adult collection on the upper level. Teens and a medium meeting room were moved up to the top floor, what they called the attic level on this drawing. Again, restrooms were added to every floor. This proposal did meet the Building Program requirements, but it required additional square footage for stairs and elevator. It would be aesthetically difficult to add a fourth story. The massing of a four-story building, the edge of historic downtown would be not, probably not the best fit. It would definitely be taller than anything around it physically. It would also cause us to have to staff four floors during open hours, which could cause safety issues for staff working alone or just requiring additional staffing levels that we were not planning. And then one of the proposals that got a lot of discussion came from a resident, I believe, at one of our focus groups. And this proposal, we knew was a little out there when we started investigating, but I wanted to share it anyway. This would be demolition, addition, and renovation on an expanded lot. And the expanded lot being the red square that you can see right here, which would take off the Parkman Street entrance and rebuild a new entrance, taking up half of Parkman Street and building a turnaround. So effectively making Parkman Street one-way out the back and one-way exit only along the side of the library. As you can imagine, that would add a lot of square footage and give us meeting space and children's space. It met the Building Program requirements. However, the impacts on the neighbors, on the Forbes traffic flow, the police department in particular, would be problematic as would be relocating utilities and having to reconfigure, a complete reconfiguration of a busy street. So that definitely was not our final option. And then lastly, we considered new construction on an alternate site. And we looked at everywhere that we could find in the downtown business district to see if there was any available property where we could build a new library. There was not. The two parcels that we identified as possible locations for a newly-built new construction library were at the senior center, adjacent to the senior center on Rogers Road and at the state hospital. At the state hospital, we were looking at one section right here with the box around it, along Hospital Road, where we could put a new two-story library with a parking lot across a new street. One of the advantages to this would be that new construction, of course, is always less expensive than renovating a 100-year-old building. And the town already owns the property. We didn't know at the time whether there was any use, any different uses planned for the site. And of course, it's a beautiful location. We also looked at the senior center site. And what we were looking at here was this area. So if you, if you can see, this is the existing senior center. This is the parking lot. And this plan would extend the parking lot to add additional parking. And then the two-story building would be located across the parking lot. This is, was a wooded site that, again, we weren't sure if there were other uses planned for this or if it was just going to continue to be wooded. It did meet the program requirements. However, it was, both remote sites were ruled out as due to feedback from patrons that we discussed the project with during focus groups and through our surveys, that both of these remote locations would reduce or eliminate their ability to walk to the library. Our teens in particular, when we had a focus group at the high school, were really turned off by the idea of having a library located so far away because on the half-days when they get out of school, they walk right by the library. And it makes it easy for them to come after school for volunteering or homework. And it also would leave the town with a beautiful but vacant building right in a prominent location in the downtown area. So what you see here is the site plan for the preferred option, which is demolition, addition, and renovation on the existing site. The lower level would feature part of our adult collection, our much larger teen room, and what we're calling our medium meeting room. So this is located where the current meeting room is, only it would be slightly bigger. This meeting room would hold 64 chairs by fire code and would be divisible. So we'd be able to have two meetings going on at the same time or a program and a meeting. Pre-COVID, our meeting room was in use almost every evening of every week. We would schedule our library programs literally months in advance. At this time of year, we would be booking our meeting rooms for the summer, for summer programs, because we needed to make sure we got our library things on the calendar first. The community really used our space. And we wanted to make sure we had an adequate meeting space without, as I said earlier, without a 100-person meeting room, but still being able to meet people's needs for meeting space in the community. The main floor features the rest of the adult collection, a staff work area, and again, what we were calling small meeting rooms. But those would be the small, like one or two-person study rooms that patrons have been asking for. Again, bathrooms added on every floor. And then lastly, the children's room would move up to the top floor. That was the only way we could get the square footage that we needed for the children's space. And also to get the children's room out of the basement. The children's room should be full of light and energy and color and not be dark and enclosed. So we would add a large children's program room and adequate workspace for our staff, additional storage, which we don't have in the current building. And we would still keep the Westboro Center for History and Culture in the the old building, in the nineteen oh eight building. We would move that that space upstairs and add an archival storage space. We're rapidly outgrowing the very small amount of archival storage we have. So we would add an archival space up on the top floor. That would bring our total square footage to thirty six thousand five hundred. And as I said, the building program that describes the library that our community needs is available on our website at this URL. This plan is grant eligible and is appropriate for the current setting and the available space. One of the questions I get a lot, besides where is the temporary location going to be, is what about parking? And the select board is aware of the issues with parking and commissioned a parking study last year or the year before that showed that there is no parking problem in the downtown area. But what I'm showing you on my graphic here is the library footprint, which the property line is the dashed lines. The congregational church is above, Parkman Street is below, and West Main Street is to the left. There are forty spaces in the congregational church parking lot. And the church allows us to use their parking lot for staff and patron parking. They've been really great neighbors and we appreciate the use of their space. There are also twenty on-street parking spaces nearby and thirteen spaces against the Forbes building. The area in red on this slide would be the new addition, which would not impact the parking areas that I mentioned. And this is a draft rendering of the exterior of the building. This is our sort of like our first pass at what the renovated library could look like. My consultant at MBLC is always fond of saying that when you stand on the corner of Parkman and West Main, when the project is done and you look at the building, it's not going to look like this at all. But this just gives us an idea and what they're really showing us here is that the roof lines will match and that the exterior will be brick. It will be complimentary to the existing architecture. It won't be the same as the existing granite exterior because there's no way to duplicate hundred and fourteen year old granite. The same with the slate roof that is made of slate tiles that were mined in the Adirondacks in one certain location in the early nineteen hundreds. So the roofing material will be different, but it will be complimentary. And this is one possible rendering of what a renovated children's room could look like. And this is just really showing it would be on the top floor. You can see the Forbes building through the windows and you can see all the happy children using the space and all of the the color and the light. That's what we're really going for here. So at the time when we submitted our grant application, our cost estimate for the total project cost was twenty four million dollars. And keep in mind, these are twenty sixteen dollars. Our grant award was nine point four eight million. And our newly formed Westboro Public Library Foundation has committed to raising a million dollars towards the project. The Library Board of Trustees has also plans to contribute funds, trust funds towards the project. So the estimated net cost to the town is thirteen point oh two million dollars. And again, that's in twenty sixteen dollars. In the time since the grant was awarded, we've had a whole host of maintenance projects that we've deferred or we say that we've MacGyvered. One of them being our windows. We have a number of windows that just have signs on them that say do not open because we know because we did it the last time that we opened them and it's very difficult or almost impossible to get them closed again. Lower level waterproofing and site drainage has been a problem for a very long time. And I have some pictures to show you of some of the issues. This is at the exterior of one of the wood frame windows that Cliff Rose, our custodian, was working on this summer. And he just plastered and like scraped away paint and just filled in with wood putty and then repainted just to baby them along as long as we possibly can until we get to the renovation. This is in the children's room. This is what the carpet looks like on a projector picture. In person, it looks worse. It's carpet that has needed to be replaced for many years. It's coming apart at the seams and this is where our children crawl on the floor and play. And our our public restrooms, again, as I I keep going back to those because it's a constant source of irritation for patrons. We did have some repairs that we had to make a couple of years ago and that required the floor to be jackhammered and pipe repairs to be made. When we went to refill it, we couldn't replace the the tile that was on the floor. And again, we weren't going to put money into re-tiling two bathroom floors when a few years from now, that may be something that we're going to just rip up. So it's cemented over and it's safe. It's just not attractive. Our bathrooms are cleaned twice a day and patrons still come in and say that they don't like our bathrooms. It feels gross and looking at it, it feels gross, but it had just been cleaned when the picture was taken, so. And then my my last of my pretty pictures is our wire closet. The library doesn't have room for a typical wire closet slash server area. All of our equipment is on a tabletop and that's our internet connection that's coming in into that that area. All of the wires feed down under the table into a cardboard box so that nobody's feet get wrapped up in them and like accidentally yank out the connection. So you can see there's a lot of work that we need to do on our IT infrastructure. And and again, in nineteen oh eight and again, in nineteen eighty, we weren't anticipating the infrastructure, the IT infrastructure that we currently need in a public building like this. Some of the additional maintenance that we need is listed here. One of the a couple of the more urgent things that we're concerned about are the slate roof, which the architects told us has about a hundred year lifespan. And the elevator has a twenty five year lifespan. It's now forty one years old and we hold our breath every time the inspector comes and it it passes and then and then chimney cracks and roof leaks and all different kinds of things that we've had to deal with over the last few years. Most of the things on this list were things that the architect identified that we needed to deal with within five years of the study, which was completed in twenty twelve. So one of the the important things is why, why do we need to do this now? It's expected that the MBLC will finish with the current grant round somewhere around twenty twenty eight or twenty twenty nine, that they'll get to the end of the waiting list. All of the projects will have either taken place or not. If they if they decide to do another grant round and if a construction bond is approved by the state legislature to fund it, they will most likely issue planning and design grants again in twenty thirty. Typically, construction follows a year or two later, so the first projects in that grant round would be awarded in twenty thirty one or twenty thirty two. If we waited until the next round, applied and were waitlisted again, we could be looking at twenty thirty five or later for the next opportunity. The building in its current condition, just from the little bit that you saw tonight, cannot wait until twenty thirty five. As I mentioned earlier, the feasibility study we did in twenty twelve showed that it was undersized for its current needs in twenty twelve and future needs, looking at a twenty to thirty year planning horizon. We would need to repair everything on the deferred maintenance list, bring the existing building up to code and still continue to be unable to give residents the services and space they've been asking for since twenty twelve. Libraries and schools are the only two municipal facilities that I know of that have grant funding available for construction. And we have nine point four eight million dollars waiting for us to implement this plan. The MBLC, as I again, as I said, will not fund repairs or drastically scaled back versions of the high level plan that we presented to them in our grant application. We don't get to change our minds now. We don't get to go to the end of the line and have another turn in a few years. If we decline our grant or if the voters turn the project down, the funds go back into the program and are awarded to the next municipality on the list. If either of those two things were to happen, we definitely would need to implement some sort of Plan B, which would involve obtaining estimates for the necessary repairs and maintenance projects that have been deferred. We don't have those exact numbers at this time, but that's something that we would need to obtain. And lastly, the community has been asking for a better library and waiting it waiting for it to happen since before my tenure began at the library in two thousand and ten. We believe there's strong community support for the project to move forward. And I want to show you a little bit about how the library has been used over the last few years. So this is our total circulation by year, twenty fourteen to twenty twenty one. We've been steadily checking out over two hundred thousand items a year since twenty fourteen with our first dip below two hundred thousand last year due to the pandemic. But in twenty twenty, factoring in a full shutdown from March to July and then curbside service only in July and August and then limited browsing and limited patron capacity for the rest of the year, we still loaned over two hundred thousand items. That tells me that our community values and uses our library. Our total attendance at library events was generally on an upward trend until COVID hit as well. Total visits annually were also on a generally upward or stable trend until COVID hit. And again, this is not a slide for me to give you tiny numbers to look at. What I want to point out here is that I'm really proud of the fact that we opened to the public in September of twenty twenty and never had to close again during the seasonal COVID spikes last winter. For a time, we were one of the only libraries in the area that was open because we had all the precautions in place. Our circulation figures for the year show it too. We had the highest circulation of all of the surrounding towns all the way through May of twenty twenty one, when others started to slowly reopen. So from October to May, we had the highest figures and then Shrewsbury reopened and then Worcester finally was able to reopen their main branch and it's continued in that trend since then. So just to wrap it up, it's been very clear to me, the library trustees and the library building committee since twenty twelve, that residents want an improved library and they expect a higher level of service than what we're able to provide in our current facility. We believe this project will provide what they're asking for and it will take care of their needs for decades to come. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you very much for the detailed presentation. Are there questions, comments or concerns from members of the select board? Sean? Shelby?
How much time do we have? I mean, it's a sincere question.
We can allow some time for questions. It's a big project and it's important to have a discussion.
Okay, so I'll start with two questions. So first of all, great presentation. Thank you very much. Having been a former library privately serving as a former library trustee, I have some real perspective on on the project in those what seems like a long time ago now. But you've definitely provided some additional information, so thank you. First question is, has the MBLC addressed, you know, as it's looking at COVID and the pandemic that continues in its fashion and God knows where it goes from here, have they considered the impacts of a pandemic and issued any guidance as it relates to meeting space requirements or any other components that are very detailed in the grant that would allow for adjustments going forward in the design?
They haven't addressed those types of issues. What they've been more focused on because it's been somewhat more urgent was the day to day operations. And you may remember from your days on the library board, there are certain requirements that we have to meet in order to remain certified with with MBLC. One of those is our municipal appropriation requirement has to be a certain level. And the amount of money that we spend on books and other materials has to be a certain percentage of our budget. For us, it's fifteen percent. And MBLC looked at those types of day to day items and waived those requirements for two fiscal years to give some relief to cities and towns. And we actually were able to return back quite a bit of money because when we were told we didn't have to spend fifteen percent of our budget on materials, we didn't spend fifteen percent. And we were extremely careful and conservative. Not that we are ever reckless and not conservative, but we just tried really hard to not spend a dime that we didn't have to and return back money back to the town as much as we could. So they haven't looked at that as far as the the construction projects went. They've only been concerned with the day to day.
And they haven't issued any hints that they would be willing to look at that?
No, but I don't know that anyone has asked either.
Okay. So my second question is, I think you made it pretty clear, but I just want to be sure that the grant was submitted as in the preferred design or the the preferred design was submitted and the grant was awarded. So is there any opportunity? Let's just say that, given all things and given that we're now in looking at a twenty twenty three to twenty twenty five cost factor, inflation cost factor. If we said we'd love this effectively, the exact design, aesthetics outside changing maybe, but we want to put it on next to the senior center, same footprint, same everything, say all the same wonderful addition and elements, cannot be considered or it's no, it has to be there, that footprint per the per the grant?
It would have to be there with that footprint per the grant. We're not allowed to make a large scale change like that when we had already done the assessment and looked at all seven options to decide which one was the best. They awarded the grant based on that and we can't just change our mind now and decide, oh, we're going to build new on a different site. They they will not allow that. They will allow us to make small adjustments to the project, but nothing drastic like going from renovation to new construction.
And that's just because that's their parameters?
Yes.
Okay. That's all for now.
Ian?
Thanks, Maureen, for that and agree that was great to get a refresher and see all that. I guess the question related to Shelby's is thinking about it kind of from a cost benefit analysis when we looked at it before and the money and at twenty four million. Is there a level that a new that a new price comes in that just says even with a nine million dollar grant, is it just too much? And we go back and say renovation or some of the other options which may not qualify the grant are better for the town? Is that something that you've even considered or or have talked about? Or if not, will you be talking about? I know it's premature probably because we don't know what that number is. I just think in my mind, as Shelby talked about with inflation and the number of years since that pricing, I'm scared that that number could be astronomically higher. Hopefully not, but it
Hopefully not. It's not something that we've discussed yet. The library building committee, as I said, just started meeting again in October. And our pressing urgent task was to get a new OPM onboard. And so we've been focused on that. However, that is imminent and once that happens, then that is something that's on our mind very much. The cost and how much it's the cost escalation is is going to be. We know it's going to go up. It's, you know, construction costs never go down. It's, you know, construction costs never go down. But I have had the chance to talk to my colleagues in Marlborough and Grafton, who Marlborough is under construction at the moment. If you haven't been by there, it's kind of shocking since their demolition happened. And Grafton is set to cut their, have the ribbon cutting this Friday. And they both said their projects were, they had factored in 5% escalation, and they're still within that. Grafton started their project pre-COVID, and I think Marlborough had just broken ground when COVID happened. So they're still, so I'm trying to be optimistic that it may not be as bad as we hoped, but I also want to be realistic that costs are definitely going to go up. So I don't have the answer for that yet, but that's something that the building committee will be discussing for sure.
Great, thank you.
Patrick?
I will just say that you answered all of my questions. Very thorough presentation, and I appreciate that. And some of those questions that I had, being a new board member, I wasn't aware of some of the history behind it and the various different options. So that was great to see. I guess, you know, to dovetail a little bit onto Shelby's question, it's unfortunate that we can't look at other location options at this point during the grant process. And I'm just wondering, and probably the answer is no, is there anything that this board could do to exert any assistance on the grant? Or, you know, the, on the grant itself? Or writing of letters to our state senators or whatever to change that? Because I think, I'm hearing a lot from the town in regards, not only needing a new library, but also a new senior center and also a new community center. And to, I think Shelby's point, that location up on Rogers Road, I don't know all the details of it, but it seems like an ideal spot with perhaps even connectivity over to Hastings, you know, walking paths, et cetera. It would be a beautiful place to put this. And I get the point about the high school and the distance and the kids. I certainly, as a high schooler in Westboro, enjoyed walking down to the school as a kid. So I just, I really wish there was some option there. And I don't know if that's something we can take back and think on or if it's just an absolute no at this point. I just, I would love to see some opportunity there.
I can certainly ask the question of my consultant at MBLC and get back to you on that. But I also do know from the feedback that we got from surveys of focus groups multiple times over the lifespan of this project so far, residents were adamant that they wanted the library to remain in the downtown. They didn't want it to be anywhere but where it is right now. But I will certainly ask the question and find out what they have to say and get back to you on that.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Ellen. So at our previous meeting, I was added to the library building committee. Thank you, everyone, for doing that. And I will keep you apprised at our forthcoming meetings. The next meeting of the library building committee is scheduled for, I think, going to be December 28th. So where we'll be reviewing the OPM candidates and things of that nature. And then, you know, hopefully in the next couple of months, can sort of start to sort some of these things out. But yeah, there are, there's certainly a lot of moving parts here. And for something we've been waiting for, for multiple years, now it's upon us and it's hurry up and finish the plan. So, but look forward to keeping everybody apprised on the board.
So my questions sort of go to the funding and the potential net cost to the town. How quickly would it be possible to get even a high-level estimate of change in construction and development project costs?
The architects that we're working with, Lamero Pagano Associates, when we talked about it at our first building committee meeting, said that it would take six to eight months. And they're aware of the need to get the updated cost estimate done as quickly as possible. So our request to them, and Sean can back me up on that at the building committee meeting, can be to make it on the six-month end, if not sooner. The sooner the better, I think.
Okay. Six to eight months could be problematic because if the number comes back big, there's not much time for the community to process it before we need to head in. Is there a way that there can be, you know, maybe a less detailed cost analysis that can at least come back and give us a ballpark? Are we looking, you know, a 5%, you know, scale over what we expected is different than a 45% scale?
Right.
And it's, you know, it's, for me, I guess it's a question of order of magnitude. And then the second aspect of this is, you know, with your advisor from MBLC, you know, given that MBLC decided to not issue funds for a full year because of COVID, they, in effect, beyond the regular program that says, you know, you get what you get, and you don't get upset, right? No matter how long it takes, they added a year delay, which added, which will contribute to that increased cost. So is there any way to discuss with them an adjustment, at least for that one year of timeframe in construction, you know, increasing the grant to reflect the fact that they delayed the project or the granting of the funds by year, and that's adding to our costs? And is it worthwhile for the town to approach our delegation with this as an issue that might warrant legislation as far as directing MBLC to provide some inflationary relief in the grant process?
I think those are all valid ideas. The original cost estimate did have a few years of escalation rolled into it, into the 24 million. So that gives me hope that it's not going to be a 45% increase.
That's good.
That percentage will be significantly smaller. I really don't think it would go anywhere for us to request that they make some provision because of inflation because there are still a number of projects below ours on the waiting list for funds. They've only got so much funding in their, in the construction bond to fund all of the projects that they've awarded grants to. So I don't know that it would get anywhere, but it does not hurt to ask.
Okay. And should we be asking, you know, the state delegation potentially to supplement the grant with ARPA funds or that the state controls? Is there still trying to figure out how, what they're going to do with the state-level money? I know as a town, we have a process for the money that's coming directly to the town that we're in the midst of. But just sort of any additional mechanism for financial relief?
ARPA funds would be fantastic for our project and for every other project on the list.
Yeah, I mean, I can't, I can't speak to eligibility, but certainly the state with their ARPA funds are putting money in buckets and setting up programs for grant applications. So I'm not sure if this is one of them, but, you know, we can, we continue to watch.
Okay, thank you very much. No further questions? Okay, great. Great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you for being on the spot and on the firing line a little bit with the questioning. Appreciate it. Okay, next on the agenda is the fiscal 2023 budget preview.
Can we, I'm sorry, can we just get a copy of the presentation? I don't think it was in our packet.
Of Maureen's.
Yes, yeah, I mean, if it could just be reloaded, that would be great. Thanks.
So I'm going to present you with FY23 budget preview. And we have John Steinberg, our chief assessor, and Leah Talbot, our finance director, who will jump in this presentation with me. Budget preview is not, most of you are aware, is not something that we typically do. The charter requires that the budget be submitted to the Select Board and the Advisory Finance Committee by December 21st of each year. And that's usually the first time that any of you individually will see the budget. And that comes in the form of, you know, the full budget document. So this year, we're offering this budget preview a week before that deadline, really as a tool for transparency and communication around a budget that will put forward a significant tax increase to the average single family. Specifically, this presentation is intended to educate around factors that are driving this increase. Unlike the COVID discussions that we had, these factors are not unprecedented. They're always used in consideration of the budget. They are always drivers in terms of what the average single family increase will be. And that includes commercial values, residential values, and then, of course, the town and school budgets. But specifically today, we're going to talk to you about this particular increase because what we're seeing in FY23 is that our residential values are far outpacing our commercial, industrial, and personal property. And that's really a significant driver as we start to put together the FY23 budget. So this is a slide that I show you all the time, which is the average single-family tax bill increase. You can see that we remain fairly steady over the last 10 years and even before, with something in the $200 to $300 range. We did have a spike in 2019, where you'll see on John's slides that we actually had an increase, again, at that time of the residential value. But what we're predicting in FY23 with the numbers as they currently stand is an increase to the average single family of $1,290. So what are the, what's contributed to the increase? So the first increase, as I mentioned, is that the, the property values in the FY23 budget, if the FY23 budget did not increase, the average single-family tax bill would still increase approximately $515 due to the increase in residential value, which is far exceeding the change in the commercial-industrial value. So that's not something that we, as I said, that's always a driver. That's always a driver when we're putting together our budgets. That's always something that drives our numbers and brings back the average single-family increases. But because it's so significant, we really want to spend the next couple of minutes with John educating around how the residential values are driving that residential increase.
Hello there, John Steinberg, your chief assessor. I feel like I was just standing here, and I believe it was less than a month ago where I said, looking forward to fiscal '23, we will see a substantial increase. Well, here I am now, less than a month later, trying to figure out what that substantial increase is. As you know, as Christie mentioned, the average single-family tax, the average single-family value is part of the map, right? We all know what home values are selling for, right? It's not a surprise that property values are going up in insane ways. People are paying a lot of money for your neighbor's houses, and that's the average single-family sale price. The assessed values are driven by sales. That's how, where the values come from, okay? Back up a second and understand where these particular numbers come from, okay? We have our classification hearing. We set the tax rate. It was done on December 2nd. Because of our timing with town meeting, even though the assessor's office has not completed their inspections, we haven't completed, we haven't even started our true analysis of the calendar 2021 sales, which are still going on, we require a full year's sales to do the analysis, and they're still going on. And we go out and figure out what those sales mean. So prior to all this, because I need to come up with estimates despite the fact that I don't really want to come up with estimates, it's not my favorite part of the job to come up with estimated numbers and analysis that I haven't really done, I take a quick look. I take a look at the sales. I take a look at the sales that I have. Mind you, we have not investigated them all. We have not ferreted out why people paid X for Y if they've got finished basements, and we don't have that information. That's all data that we spend time putting together in the first portion of the calendar years. So I take a look at that, and I come up with a projected single-family change. I also take a look at the other residential properties. I take a look at condos. I take a look at large multifamilies. The residential class is a lot easier to do because I have sales. That's public record. That's information that's much easier to ferret out. So these numbers I come up with, with some semblance of an educated guess. Last year, my projection was 551,000 for the average single-family. It came in at 558. Not bad, a year plus in advance, right? But that $7,000 translates to $130 on the average single tax bill. So when we're planning through the year, right? And we've had March town meeting, and I'm getting there. I'm getting closer. I'm getting closer. We're coming up to October. And I say, I'm going to be low. I walk down to Leah's office, and I say, Leah, I'm really close, but that $7,000 is going to add $130. So now, instead of 350, right, we're now 480, right? Because I was close, but not quite there. But the numbers change throughout the year as I refine them, as we do our analysis, as we dig deeper into what that is. But it's hard to do this far in advance. And this is just the residential side of property value. Now, mind you, nothing happens in a bubble, right? We have our commercial, industrial, and personal property. COVID, as we know, has affected our commercial, industrial, and personal property. And we have always been very proud and pleased to say that we have more than 30% of non-residential value. It's great. They pick up a lot of the burden. Well, when those values don't move and the residential values do move, there's a shift, right? Now the residential properties are going to carry more of the burden than the commercial-industrial properties. This is tentatively what I'm projecting for next year. You can see in the red, we're going to be below the 30% mark, okay? Now, mind you, there's lots that I don't know about the valuation of the non-residential property. Unlike residential property, where I have raw data, I don't receive my personal property returns until March 1st, okay? So I don't have any of my data for personal property, okay? And that's the data that I get on time. There's lots of data that we spend time going out to ferret out. There are companies that we audit. There's things that we need to do to seek out, do the discovery on the personal property. Commercial-industrial property, we get returns called income and expense reports. We send them out. They have to send them back. Many do. We have a much better return rate than many of the other communities, okay? There's a fine if they don't. Not a big fine for a $10 million building when you get a $250 fine, but nobody likes a fine, right? Some say, well, forget you. I'm not sending it back. I'll pay the 250, okay? Residential properties is only 50 bucks. You think Park or Arrive care about a $50 fine? They care about it because it affects their right to appeal, okay? And that's telling. And so when they do appeal, and I call the attorney, I say, well, I'm about to file a motion to dismiss because your client didn't return their INE. And there's silence on the other end. And they say, well, send me evidence of that. And I send them evidence. Amazing how quickly they withdraw their appeal, okay? We get the data, but that data doesn't come to me until the summertime. So the analysis that I'm going to do on the industrial, commercial, and personal property, I don't have any of the information on. So this is more of a trend economic forecast, right? And hopefully, my crystal ball, in my experience, I'm somewhat in the ballpark, you know? Even though I don't have any of the data, right? That's what was in a pre-COVID world. I don't know about any of you, never done it before in COVID. It's really a little bit tricky, okay? I haven't really figured it out, you know? But hopefully, when the data comes in, we'll have a good way to refine this. Now, this is going to be after March Town Meeting. And this is why those numbers change. We get asked all the time, "Why do the numbers change? Why do the numbers change?" The answer is because my office is doing their job, and it takes time. It takes time and data, okay? On the residential side, we need to seek out the facts of all those sales, not just some of them. 100% of the sales, we need to understand the why, okay? And so that process takes time, okay? There's lots of talk about all these projects in the pipeline. You know, we've got Amazon's going to build two more buildings, right? We've got a new Cold Harbor that's going in. These are great projects, right? January 1st is the effective date for fiscal '23. Yes, January 1st of 2022 is the effective date for fiscal '23. Those projects don't have buildings yet. Even though with new construction, we can actually go up to June 30th of 2022. But they need to still do site work in 4400. They haven't even started taking down the, they haven't sold the building yet, right? So those projects are not until fiscal '24 at the earliest, right? Because when it's partially complete, they're going to take down 4400. That value is going to go down before it goes up, right? When, when AstraZeneca left, that property value went down, right? Even as Amazon Robotics building, the property value went down because now you have a construction site. So there's moving targets within this and conversation about potential, which is coming, but not here yet. And all that weighs into fiscal '23 with what we're facing. Now, my hope is, when I get that data, that that 28.5% will come up, right? And if that commercial industrial and that non-residential value comes up, that will defray some of this to the average single family, right? If the other type of residential property goes up, right? We've been fortunate. We've had some big sales lately. In fact, on a good note of the commercial industrial property is there was a sale, I saw it in the paper today, 1,400, where is it? There you go. 1,400 computer drive, $10 million to, which is a really good sign for stability and even some strength in our offices, right? Which is really one of my big questions. Timing of this is perfect. Worcester Business Journal today. So there you go. We have one sign. But again, when I did that, okay, I walked, December 2nd, our tax rate was certified. I presented my numbers that Thursday. I think that December 2nd might even be that, on Thursday. I came up with numbers, and I said, "Oof." So I walked down to Leah's office, and I said, "Leah, oof." And we sat together, and I went back to my office, and I did them again. I said, "Oh, God, I made a mistake. I was so..." Never in my life been more excited that I made a mistake, only to find out I didn't make the mistake. So I walked back down there again. Friday morning, we walked to Kristi's office, right? And on Tuesday, after the weekend, we had a finance team meeting, and now we're here. So when Kristi says, "In full disclosure, to be transparent and get you the information as soon as it's coming to us," that's what we're doing, right? And we're doing it because it's important that we pass that information on as soon as we know it. Anyone that's been in my office knows I'm the first one to stand up and give warnings and tell people the way it is because I'm the one that's going to get it when, when it comes. So the next slide, this one takes some digestion, right? This is typical me, small numbers, lots going on. I'm going to walk you through some of it, okay? The reason it's complex is because what really impacts the tax dollars, the average single family tax bill is complex. You can't simplify it down to what's the new value of the average single family? What's the spending? There's other variables, okay? The yellow up there, orangish color, is the change in the total residential value. So that's not just your residential, single family properties. It's large residential, it's condos, it's everything that goes along with it. But it also includes those single family properties. The blue is the changes in the average single family value, okay? The green is the change in the non-residential, commercial, industrial, and personal property. You'll see in 2018, that big drop, that was the departure of AstraZeneca, and $100 million in value in personal property, okay? It's kind of staggering. The red is the change in the, in the tax bill, okay? You could see in 2019, you can see that's near the top. You could see that in 2023, big spike, right? Very apparent. And the purple, the other line, is the change in the levy. And you'll see that that change in the levy, in many cases, follows the tax bill, right? Because the spending matters. If everything went up the same, and the levy stayed the same, nobody's taxes would go up regardless of what the value did. But when the spending in the levy goes up, right, that affects, that's the other big variable. Now, you point out, 2023 is unique in that you see the average single family, the blue line, outpaces everything else, right? It's the largest increase. And that's why a portion of that increase is because of the math, because it's outpacing everything else with its percentage of increase. And that's all about what people are paying for houses, you know? It's not complex. You see it out there. I mean, we all know. How many people have gotten calls from brokers saying, "You know, I want to buy your house. You know, sell your house, I'll sell it." But then where do you go, right? I mean, I, I hear it all the time. It's, it's not easy. The other thing to note is that, an example is 2021 there. You can see the levy went up, right? But the tax bill actually went up less, right? A drop is not a decline. It's got to go below the zero line there. A drop is just going up less. And it went up less because you'll see there was only a modest increase to the average single family value, right? So it's only one of the factors because you had a bigger increase in the green, commercial, industrial, personal property, okay? And so these factors play against each other, okay? And so when you have what we have now, is why we have the numbers that we're seeing, okay? It's not to say it's not material. It's an explanation. You want to understand why and how it all works? These are the variables that go into it, right? And it's not simple. What you have right now, hopefully, will change as we get more information. Hopefully, will improve, but it's not going away, right? No matter what happens to the industrial, commercial, and personal property, right? And I played with some numbers. It's not going to have a material, it will have an improvement, but it's not going to bring it to $300. It's not going to bring it to $500, right? Simply looking at the increase in levy, the 7.5%, if you look at your right hand in the data grid, the 7.5% is the increase, change in the levy, okay? If you go back to the last time we had a 7% increase in the levy, it was 2019, okay? We still had almost a 9% increase in the tax bill, okay? It matters. And that's my resident, that's my real estate. And now I will give it back to Kristi.
I think, you know, John talks a lot about the work that he does in the assessor's office, and he's modest about it because he works really hard, and he's able to bring forward these numbers every year. There's a lot we don't know, and I think that we, or I know that we always bring that forward to your attention, make sure that you know that this is what we know as of the date. And, and you know, John talked a lot about things that he doesn't know, but I think the important thing is, is that he never knows at this time. And so typically, when we might be projecting a $450 tax bill, that when we set the tax rate is $350, that's not, that's not what we're going to see here. You know, we're not going to see the $1,200 tax bill go to $300. We hope to see it reduced because we're conservative in our estimates. We're conservative, you know, as we move forward with, with the entire budget. But it's not going to reduce down to our, to our typical $300 to $400. So another thing that contributes to the increase is the, is obviously the budget increases. So the current budget numbers, which are not final, obviously, they, you know, even when I put them forward in my recommended budget, you know, we can, will continue to look at them, they represent approximately $775 of the increase, which is significant. Even without the, even without the residential values going up, $775 is higher than we saw in our last spike in 2019. So to break it down, the town, the town budgets, and just as a reminder, our process is that the department heads will meet, or will submit their budgets. They meet with myself, the Finance Director, Assistant Town Manager. We go through all of the budgets line by line, and we, we ask lots of questions. We look at historical spending to see, you know, did you use all the budgets that you had last year? If not, why not? If maybe there was an overage in the line item, you know, does it need to be adjusted? Or was it a one-off? We spend a lot of time, a lot of time working with our department heads. And so at, at the end of that process, the, the budgets that we were prepared to put forward, you know, and the, the numbers that, that John and Leah were using when they put together this initial estimate, it was the, was the 4.5% increase onto town budget. So just under a million dollar increase, and which would represent about $114 of that average single family. The school budget, also not final. That's the superintendent's recommendation from their previous meeting, and, and is coming back before them for, the School Committee for voting tomorrow night. That's a 5.8% increase, which represents a $415 increase to the average single family. Fixed costs, so our insurance, our electricity, things like that, we're seeing a 6.5% increase. Those numbers might look strange in terms of how that, what that represents on the average single family, but that's, that $175 is what it would, what we would, how we would impact the average single family tax bill. Because that, that section of the budget is offset by $950,000 for OPEV funding. So as you remember, when we created that amendment to the Comprehensive Fiscal Management Plan, the idea was that the 1.1 million that we used to raise on the taxes that we eliminated during COVID, we were going to walk back over multiple years onto the tax rate and in, but would continue to fund at that 1.1 using other available funds. So other available funds being potentially free cash. We've talked about ARPA, we've talked about other things. And so we're projecting, we're budgeting using that $950,000 offset. With the regional retirement, this is an actual number, and so that's a 10% increase or $67 to average single family. Asset Valley Assessment is, is an estimate that represents the $3, and then the $515 that we talked about before. There's a lot of unknowns at this point. There always is. These are always unknowns. A lot of these, you hear me talk about at our, our January meeting, that we haven't received final, final numbers, but I just want to go through them so that you understand that these are things that could impact that number. But again, is not going to bring it down, or is not expected to bring it down to that, you know, $300 to $400 range. So one of them is our health insurance. We're experience rated, so it's always good for us to, to get as many sort of months in, in the, in the calculation as possible. And so right now, our consultants are telling us to, to budget a 9% increase in the health insurance. They are also very conservative, but we're not surprised. I mean, this is something that we talked about at the Budget Summit, that for multiple years, we've gotten a zero. And so, you know, we, we expected that this would, this would, would happen. And, and that's, you know, we don't just accept the numbers that we get. We negotiate. If necessary, we'll go out for RFP. But that's, right now, that's what we're carrying, is that 9% increase. Collective bargaining agreements, we have four collective bargaining agreements on the town side that are not settled. And so that 4.5% increase does not include any COLA adjustments for those four unions. Asset Valley, as I mentioned, that's something that is based on enrollment. We just haven't received that number yet, but we expect, we usually get it in January. Our property and liability insurance, again, that's a number we typically get in January. State aid, last year, we were very pleasantly surprised by state aid. We got a, a big increase in our Chapter 70 funding, and we were able to eliminate the structural deficit that had been created during COVID when we used $770,000 of free cash for tax relief. We did not expect to be able to pull that all back into the budget in one year. And so that was a really positive for the community. And then, as John talked about, the commercial, industrial, and property values, again, we never know them at this time, but given the drastic increase of the, the values in residential, we don't expect, we expect to see them continue to outpace the commercial properties. So when we're looking at this $1,300 number, we're trying to, you know, think about what number we're trying to get to. And we keep saying, "We're not going to get to 300," so the question is, you know, what number are we trying to get to? And so one of the goals that we always focus on when we are putting our budgets together is to not use any of our excess levy capacity. So if the town, if we were at our levy limit, how much could we increase the taxes without having to do an override? How much would we be allowed under Mass General law to increase taxes without the override? As you can see, this is a slide, again, that we show all the time, is we, we always increase, or except in 2019, we, we're on trajectory to increase our excess levy capacity. That means we're not taxing to the levy. And so we want to continue to, to have the budgets that we put forward not use the excess levy capacity that, that we have here. So if we were to do that, we would need to cut $2.5 million from the budget, or recognize savings and other ways, all those unknowns that we were just talking about. And that would bring us down to a $964 increase to the average single family. So again, that recommendation would be to reduce the levy by 2.5 million to avoid using more levy capacity than, than would normally be allowed under Proposition 2.5. And that brings us to that $964 number. How do we get there? So considerations for mitigating the impact, FY23 budget reductions and deferrals. We've, we've already had a meeting, I gave this the same presentation to our department heads on Friday morning so that they were well aware, they're, they've already been asked to look back in their budgets. But I would, you know, you all know, we, we lived through COVID together, and we cut $600,000 out of budgets during COVID. So these budgets, which are not fully restored from COVID, do not have that same excess that we can just go back in and cut unless we want to talk about cutting services. So at this point, a lot of the work that we've done has been about deferrals. And so we know that if the town departments do not get deferred, any of their staffing increases that they were requested for FY23, we would be able to reduce our budget from that 4.5% increase to a 1.8% increase, which would be about $47 on the average single family. Another thing that we might, another thing to consider for mitigating the impact is recognizing the savings through the unknown budget numbers. So again, continuing to negotiate for health insurance, you know, continuing to watch the numbers. State aid is projected in this budget at 1.5% increase, though, but we know that their revenues came in way over. And so we, you know, we might see some relief in the state aid numbers, which we'll get in January. Review alternative funding sources. That could be, that could be ARPA, that could be, you know, it could be grants, it could be other things that we would just continue to review. And then free cash to provide tax relief. Obviously, in our Comprehensive Fiscal Management policy, we do have a line in there about using a certain amount of free cash if it exceeds that, the 10% to 15% reserves. This is something that I, I'm sure that we will talk a lot about over the coming months, but I would warn everyone that $1 million of free cash in fiscal '23 to reduce the burden, walking that back over multiple years would end up being probably $2.5 to $3 million of free cash. Because if you're going to put $1 million against the levy, you're not going to then put it back in the budget in fiscal '24 because that's going to be a significant impact on the average single family. And so if you walk it back at $250,000 a year or $200,000 a year, that means you're planning to use free cash for multiple years to offset the levy. And so that's something that, you know, we'll consider. All of this is going to be laid out in the budget document, in my budget message. A recommendation will be laid out in the budget message. But I think- But I think for tonight, what we really wanted, the message we really wanted to get across is that this is a very big number. We want to be very transparent about it, we want to educate around it. There's probably a lot of questions from all of you and from the community, and we're fully available to answer some of those questions. But we do need to, you know, we, we do need to work in partnership with, with you all, the finance committee, the school committee, to really look at our budgets and see what we can do to mitigate the impact going forward. So, for next steps, the school committee is going to vote on the school department budget tomorrow night, and so, we'll take that number, and that's what we'll put in the budget document. And then, the town manager budget will be distributed to all of you and the advisory finance committee on Tuesday, December 21st. And that is the end of our presentation, but we'll take questions.
Mr. Johnson?
Just a quick one, back to the schools, when you had your department head meeting on Friday, was the superintendent part, I know she's not on your department head.
I don't think she was at the meeting, no. No, but we have been in touch with her. I mean, so, so it's really important, on December 7th, when we had that finance team meeting that John mentioned, that was the, the school-town finance team meeting, so...
Okay, so, school chair in the...
Yep, so, the school, the chair of the school committee, the superintendent, the director of administration and finance, Chair Edinburgh was there, and then, and all of us, and then also the chair of the advisory finance committee was there. So, so they all received that update on the 7th.
Now, the reason I was asking is just to what you talked about in the first bullet there, about what we're looking at on the town side. While we don't have control, I hope that the school hears this and is educated in thinking about it as well.
Okay.
Sean? Well, I would just like to say thank you for bringing this forward as, as quickly as you have, and, and being transparent, giving us time to think about this prior to receiving the actual budget numbers. There is certainly a lot to, to think about here. This is, it's a, it's a big number. It's a really big number.
It is.
Yeah?
Yep.
So, figure out what we can do.
Shelby? Do you want to, do you want to pass before you call the cards?
Yeah.
Okay. Patrick, you want to?
I'll just echo something that our chair of the AFC mentioned in, when we met a few months ago, and that it looks like we have some pretty significant decisions to make as a town, to see what the appetite is for the town in regards to this budget. It's, it's, it's a pretty amazing how high the taxes have risen over the last 10 years for all sorts of various reasons. I'm hopeful that the state, I, I see this as a blip. I don't know, John, if you would, you would agree with that, in regards to, you know, real estate market shot up so much in one year, you know, but...
It's, I have, I mean, personal opinion, I, if I could predict really what was going to happen next year, I wouldn't be here as your assessor, let's face it. But I can't imagine, I mean, I'm already seeing in other communities, as well as this, that the market is stabilizing, right? I don't see values going down. I think one of the big differences compared to the past of what I see, is you see a lot more fixed rate mortgages. Back when the market fell apart before, you had all sorts of funky mortgage things going on. Lot of fixed rate mortgages out there where people can afford the payments today, they'll afford them later. However, if interest rates start going up, you'll see a cooldown perhaps, but as long as supply and demand is where it is. You know, the other thing just to realize is that as these high-paying jobs come to town, when Amazon Robotics hires programmers, and Olympus comes here and opens their headquarters, right, those people want to live here, right? And they're making a lot of money, and they pay a lot of money for houses. And so, how it cools and impacts this, town can be a real question mark. I mean, I, I don't know the answers to those questions, but I think generally speaking, it's got to cool down. I mean, this can't keep going forever. It's just, it's unsustainable, I think.
Yeah, I'll just say, I, I appreciate Christie and the entire team's work on this and bringing it forward. I, I guess, one other kind of anecdotal question to you, John, is, and this is outside of our control as, as a board, but I'm just wondering if there's, if you foresee any appetite for the state to change the way the proposition two and a half is decided on an annual basis? I know legally, you have to do these assessments on an annual basis, but we're doing these, you know, you hit these spikes, right? Wouldn't, wouldn't it make more sense to have a rolling average that we can run over maybe five years or whatever, that, so we can absorb these a little bit better?
Not during the course of my career do I expect them to change the ad valorem taxation methodology in the state of Massachusetts.
Yeah, unfortunate.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Shelby?
Yeah, so, I want to echo the comments of fellow board members around the transparency and bringing this to us when you all have, and the work done to date on this. I think that, I can't emphasize enough the importance of communication to the community from this point forward, not to say that it hasn't been, just now more than ever, that communication is, is going to be really important. And one thing I think that is not well-understood is what contributes to the levy, what's in that, and why does it go up? So, John, I don't know if you can take a minute to, or Christie, to explain that element of that blue line, because I don't, I don't know that that's well-understood kind of in the public. Why, why, why does that have to continue to go up?
So, simply the levy is the total budget and spending of the town, less other receipts. So, it is the amount of money needed to pay for everything outside of other receipts, like building permits, excise tax, and all those other things, through real estate taxes, real and personal property and commercial industrial.
Sorry, so, so did you mean why, why do budgets continue to go up?
Well, no, no, no. So, let me see if I can ask this in a different way. So, the, maybe you go to the excess levy capacity slide. So, our excess levy capacity continues, has continued to increase, and that's driven by valuations, right?
Yeah, so, our excess levy capacity, and one of the things that I talk about every year at the classification hearing, your levy every year by proposition two and a half is two and a half percent times the prior year's levy limit, okay, which isn't demonstrated here, but your levy limit is the amount you could have raised the prior year, two and a half times that, plus new growth, okay? And we have a lot of new growth. Most of our new, new growth is from personal property, from these companies here in town.
Just, just a, just a quick correction, I think you said two and a half times that? I think it's actually two and a percent above that.
Two and a half...
Percent above.
Above, yes, yes.
Right.
Thank you.
Right.
But again, we're not anywhere close to...
No, we're not anywhere close to where our levy limit is. So, you're adding more to that, but we're not spending all that we could. Now, I frequently get asked the question, I thought my taxes could only go up two and a half percent, and I try to explain to people that proposition two and a half has nothing to do with your individual package. You know, different market segments do different things within real estate. So, some people, even in '22, some people... Property values went up a lot, and some did not. You know, different segments do different things based upon the market, okay?
I just, I, I think, I mean, these are rhetorical, we've heard this a lot.
Yes.
I can always use your education, John, but I think this level of education to the public is going to be, to our residents, is going to be really, really important. They, they understand, the other slide that you have with all the different colors, extremely helpful, but it's, we're going to have to really dig into that to, I don't know, have some public informations? I don't, I don't know, but I think it's going to, I think this is going to have to be more than the board hearing about it, or boards, committee, other committees of finance. And I know that there are ample meetings and people can attend, but we might want to consider that.
I'll just, I'll just mention, one of the things that I did educate myself on, the levy limit, the proposition two and a half, is the state has a fantastic series of animated videos out there, there are about two or three minutes a piece, about eight of them. They explain the overrides, they explain the exclusions, they explain all of that, how that all operates, and how the levy limit and the, and the, and the levy ceiling are all divi, calculated. So, found it very helpful as I was...
I mean, maybe those are even, that's information, we don't have to recreate the wheel, but again, for folks that are interested, that, those may be things, so I just point...
Well, I, no, I was going to say that I think that, you know, one of the reactions that we got at the finance team meeting was really about the importance of the communication around this and making sure that we're educating. And so, I think the videos that you're describing, and, you know, any information that John can provide, but also just trying to, to communicate out in, in the simplest way that we can, because it is complex. And so, certainly, you know, at the finance team, we were talking about the, the, in post-COVID, being able to get back out into the community and, uh, community groups and, you know, Westboro TV and all things like that. So, I think, I guess the point is, is that, you know, we completely agree that there's going to be a need to be a lot of communication education in here.
Yes.
Shelby, would there be an opportunity Frank and Mary?
Sure. At this point, Frank and Mary can dedicate every show to this if you'd really like, I'm sure.
I think if I, if I could just say two things. One, you never have to apologize for interrupting me, it's probably better, because I'll just, you know, ramble on about stuff. But a lot of this stuff, you know, as we try to simplify it, you know, people glaze over so frequently, and it's unfortunate, but really, you know, there's one number they understand, you know, not to boil it down and be crass, but they understand the final number, and that's...
1,200 bucks. Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
You know, even if it's the nine six, it's still a big number, anyway you, anyway you chop it up, it's a big number. And that's the message that, you know, we're trying to get out in front of, we did it in 2019, you know, until I was blue in the face. And, but that's the real side of this, and that's the side that I certainly see in my office.
The good news is your coloring came back. That's good. So, there's, there's, maybe this is just a blip. Just a couple other, I guess, sort of comments and mixed in there some questions. So, appreciate and can't underemphasize the importance of, Christie, your relationship with the superintendent, while I understand our boards, you know, are separate, and it's town and school, at the end of the day, we're all Westboro. And so, making sure that now more than ever, that there isn't a siloed approach to thinking is important. And again, I think, you know, I, I trust you and the, the professionals within your department, and certainly within the schools, to work together, but I want to certainly emphasize that. I toss it out there, do we need at some point through this process, another budget summit? I know that's scheduling a lot of folks, but do we need that type of meeting with the relevant AFC, school committee, us, even maybe planning board? I'm not sure how, you know, but I'll put that out there, no response needed. And then, as we look beyond this, and, you know, Patrick has butterflies over his head over there, because it's just a blip, and I'm going to, I love that, so I'm, I'm happy for that optimism. I'm not sharing it right now, so I'm trying to breathe that in. How do we, knowing where we're at now, right, and we're COVID, it's unprecedented, and I get it, how do we think about this in the future, right? I know we got to address today's problems, but like, so, how do the minds of Leah and John and others help us to think about '24, '25, '26, and, and are there ways that we can anticipate and project? I, I don't know, so that, you know, because there's a little bit of a shock factor here for me, certainly, I'm sure others, anyone watching, how can we, or can we soften that? Do, you know, so, again, you don't have to answer that.
Well, I do want to answer that.
Okay.
So, I mean, the budget always includes a five-year forecast, and so, you know, I think that, I think it's really important for some of the pieces of the budget that people may not have, you know, people within the community may not have paid as much attention to in the past, that they start to really, you know, that they look at that. I think, you know, as I said in the beginning, all these other presentations that we did in the last couple of years were in response to COVID and completely unprecedented and different, this is, this is high, but it's not a different driving factor, and it's not something that we can, and I know that's not what you're saying, but not something we can sort of fix so that doesn't happen in the future. It's just, it's just, it's the market. And so, you know, certainly, we can, we'll speak to, to that five-year forecast and kind of, you know, how that might look in the future, but that's, you know, as John explained, that's sort of the most we can do, sort of given when you get the actual data.
Sure.
But...
The, the other thing that I'll just add as, as a comment, and is, you know, I feel, well, we just set the tax rate, right? We just went through that exercise in November, right?
Yes.
Right, whatever, December 2nd, whatever the date...
Yeah, November, yep.
And then, and again, I, I fully understand, Christie, we've actually talked about this, I'm just, this is more of a public statement, that, you know, it feels like if I knew then what I know now, would I have potentially made a different decision, or would I have asked other questions to inform my FY '22 rate?
Yeah, so, I, I think it's a, it's a great question.
And can we change that timing, or of, of when we, I don't know?
Well, so, I think it's really important for everyone to understand that the tax rate that was set in November was that 325 number, I'm just going to go back here, was for that 325 number, and that was for fiscal '22. So, what, what was done at the tax classification, tax classification hearing does not impact what's, what we're talking about right now. This is a different budget year, and this tax classification hearing will not happen until November of 2022. So, I think that that's important to understand, that, you know, one, one doesn't, doesn't impact the other necessarily, and that, you know, you still have those tools that you had at the classification hearing to impact this, to this budget number. You know, I'm not saying that we recommend, we're recommending that, but it's certainly a tool that I'm sure we'll have a lot of discussion about over the next several months.
Can I just add one thing to that? I, I think just one comment is that you aren't going to raise more money or change anything at your tax classification hearing relative to the '22 budget and the values being presented. You know, I, I mean, that's focusing on what do you need to raise for that fiscal year, so I don't know that that would have played into the tax classification hearing. You know, it has much more to do with decisions that were made in March and October, right, that you're going to make in this March and October, that then you figure out, okay, when the classification comes, how are we going to fund that? Those decisions that we've already made, right? So, relative to putting it in perspective, that's the independence from one to the next, right? And yes, I get how you feel, we just did this, now we're doing this? Welcome to my world, right?
And, and again, just final comment, if I may, so, I do think, again, part of that communication is, is, again, in as, as simple way as possible to, for folks to understand how the fiscal years, you know, how these, how the timeline applies to these decisions that we're making, because it's candidly, it's hard for me to follow, and based on how we make decisions, and I can't imagine that, again, that maybe the public doesn't care about the timeline, they care, they care about, you know, the, the bottom-line number, but that may be part of the education.
Yeah, and it might be helpful to walk through the budget document more specifically at the budget hearing, so that folks who are interested in diving in know kind of what's in there.
Okay, Shelby, go ahead.
So, I know Ian has an additional comment, but I'll take my, my first turn at the microphone this round, and so, I guess I'll start with a quote from Maya Angelou, which is, "Hoping for the best, prepared for the worst, and unsurprised by anything in between." I think that's sort of where we are and where we need to be right now, as we work through this. A couple of, a couple of points. Definitely agree with comments about silo as we look at this, and so, at a, at a strategic level, you know, in, in looking cross-silo, particularly between town and the school, if there are any low-hanging fruit as far as consolidation of services. I know there was a, you know, a study done back, what, 2009, 2010, that probably, you know, looked at possible consolidation of services. I think they picked probably the three or four most difficult areas, but maybe there's some simpler areas that, you know, could provide some cost economies across both the town and the school side. You know, the, the, the school budget increase, you know, having watched the meetings, I recognize that of their percentage, there's some things that, you know, can change, there's things, some... some things that probably can't. You know, I'm, I'm aware of that. They're in the third year of their contract term. And because of their concern about the impact, you know, three years ago, when the contract was negotiated, they backloaded the increase. So, there's a large increase for school employees, which is earned and well-deserved. It wasn't as even, it was more backloaded. And that's eighty-three, you know, personnel's eighty-three percent of their budget, their issues with increased costs related to special ed, transportation, some other things. You know, nevertheless, I know that, you know, they're meeting tomorrow to discuss budget and approve. And I'm, I'm hopeful that they're, you know, just as, you know, Kristy met with town department heads on Friday and started the process of once again looking and making tough decisions, that the school department with their department heads and areas are doing the same thing. I'm hopeful that that's happening, we, you know, and that we see some indication of that tomorrow. If not, you know, in our COVID years, both the town and the school have made additional amendments and changes to the proposed budget. Between the time they're initially presented and by the time we get to town meeting, as more information becomes available and we look for positive solutions, I look forward to that process happening. And so, maybe an additional or a more extended budgets, you know, summit meeting at the end of January is warranted. As Shelby mentioned, the timing is, is always interesting, this. And, and one of the things that came to mind is back in 2019, when we had a large increase. In some respects, it really didn't become apparent to the community until the fiscal Q3, right? And that tax bills go out for Q1 in July, Q2's in September. We don't have fall town meeting till October, the final levy, the tax rate isn't set till November. And then, you sort of, I know, you know, the, the tax bills are estimates for Q1 and Q2. And then, the real impact, once you know the final numbers, sort of hits everyone in that January tax bill, Q3. And so, no need to answer now, but if there's an allowed mechanism that maybe evens it out or lessens the blow in some way, if that's something that, you know, could be explored, no matter where we land on the spectrum, right? Because even if we're able to stay within that, you know, perhaps two and a half number, we're still looking at a pretty painful year as far as tax increases go.
Yeah. So, we did talk about that at the finance team meeting. So, I'm glad you brought it up. So, Leah and John had already talked, discussed potentially trying to figure that out to make it less, less of an impact in Q3.
Okay. Ian, you had.
Yeah. I just think, real quick, to, to just kind of play on comments that both you and Shelby had, I kind of think we're on the same page. But I think it's, to me, this is a time for all of us to work together. So, it's not Kristy and, and Amber on the school side. It's, it's us and our counterparts on the school committee. I think we all have to get in. This, this is why this forum is great to start it. This is, we're a team. We're all facing this. We need to work together and figure it out. I do think that a, I don't know, some sort of task force, whatever, I think absolutely what's out here, we, we have to get across, but we have to dumb it down. I mean, we understand it. But even I was struggling with some of this stuff. But I think, it's all there. And I think there's some things that we can do. Maybe it is. Maybe we're gonna be TikTok videos or something. I don't know. But, but, yeah, it's not gonna be me. But I do think, I think it's, it's great that we know this now. A lot of things will change. We're, to me, we're starting early on budget season, and we just gotta work through it all together and figure this out. It's, you know, with everybody. And I know there's a bunch of advisory finance. We need to work as a team. This is, no one wants to see this on our side. And we're all gonna get the brunt of it from the residents as well. So, we need to educate them, but work through it. Hopefully, we'll hear from them, and they'll provide us ideas, because there are a lot of good ideas out there. So, I think we should be getting the word out. I imagine that this will be out in the newspapers. This is a big deal. So, I think we're gonna start hearing about it. But we can start figuring out how we continue to communicate this. But a lot more to come. But first and foremost, just appreciate you guys coming forward with this tonight, because it's, it's an important first step. Not what we want to hear, but we gotta work through it.
I just wanted to add. So, just going back, the consolidation is something that we brought up, that I brought up at the, your retreat. So, I think that that's something that would be great to work forward and have as a goal. But I, that's not gonna happen fast enough to impact this number. Related to the budget day, you know, we certainly have, will look forward to the budget day with the advisory finance committee. And I think of the school committee typically attends when the school presents, but we can certainly talk about additional things. I think what I really also wanted to get across is that the budget summit, the whole purpose of the budget summit, which happens in September, so before we really know anything, is to, to think about some of the things that are coming forward. And, you know, some of the things that the town has asked for, you know, services, goals, all, all sorts of things, plans that we put in place, the climate action plan, the master plan, the municipal vulnerability plan, all the plans. You know, it's, it's really to sort of key into all the things that we know that the community, or at least sectors of the community, have set as an expectation for us. And so, we want to meet those expectations, but we can't do it without resources. And so, we know this number is bad, and we know that this isn't gonna be the year where we can get all the resources that we're asking for. But in turn, there needs to be recognition that we might not move on those things as quickly as we had hoped to. So.
Very good point. Patrick?
Yeah. I just wanna make sure the community is aware. I, I feel very confident, you know, only being a, a, a short timer on the board so far, but from what I have learned and speaking with Kristy and, and understanding how this operates, I, I will say that I am very confident that the town departments and I think also the school committee is gonna use every tool in their toolbox to, to help with this. So, I just wanna make sure the community is aware that people are, are taking this seriously and are doing the due diligence to hopefully alleviate as much of this as possible. So, I'll just say thank you again to Kristy and her team. And, and just a shout out to the school committee who's also been working on this as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Shelby, final comment, or?
Yeah. So, one, just one final comment. So, we're all in the same boat. We all have got a job to do and, you know, roar to, I mean, an oar to row. And there's, I mean this sincerely, there's no other team in terms of the town departments, Kristy under your leadership, and, you know, obviously, members of the school committee and the superintendent that I'd rather be in the boat with. I trust you guys. And we have a great team. We'll figure this out and, and do what is in the best interest of the community. And the community also in, includes our town staff, who, you know, bring forward the services that the community, you know, comes here for. So, whether that's school or fire or, you know, folks at the senior center or library staff, what have you. So, we're all in this together, and we'll figure it out.
Thank you.
Final word, Sean.
You know, I, I think this, it, it is a, a number that is, you know, unprecedented and require a lot of creativity, you know? And we're gonna do our best. We're gonna, you know, unturn, turn over every stone, you know? So, but thank you for bringing this to us. And, you know, we have time to do whatever we can regarding it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you to the team. Okay. So, the next item on our agenda is, number, number nine. I'm trying to make sure I don't skip anything again. It's the local initiative program request to refinance. The, the owner of an affordable property at Six British Lane has made a request to refinance their mortgage. The request need, because it's affordable, the request needs to be approved by the select board, as well as the Department of Housing and Community Development. DHCD puts some requirements on any new or second mortgage. Those are a fixed interest rate through the full term. The fair market interest rate cannot be more than 2% above the mass housing rate, which is currently in the range of 2.75 to 4.5%. Have no more than two points and have a loan amount that does not exceed more than 97% of the maximum resale price, which is specified in the property's deed rider. And that maximum resale price is set by DHCD as an affordable unit. And so, the board has the motion in front of them. And looking through the documentation, the initial request for the size of the mortgage was $210,000. But DHCD, looking at the resale value that they would set on the property currently, has set a maximum amount of $192,630. So, I would entertain a motion to approve the refinancing request of Six British Lane for the loan to be at a fixed rate and not to exceed the amount of $192,630.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay. Any questions or discussions? Seeing, hearing none, we'll vote. All in favor. I, motion passes, five zero, five being present. Okay. Number 10 on the agenda is a request to approve a collective bargaining agreement. My understanding is that the final paperwork.
Yeah, we're just not ready to bring that forward.
Is not here. So, we'll pass over that. And we'll, we'll re, we'll add it to next week's meeting agenda. We've already done number 11. So, moving on to number 12, request for appointments.
We had a change here too late, right?
Yeah, we had a late change here. Mr. Passler has withdrawn his request to be appointed to the Veterans Advisory Board. So, we're looking for a motion to, hold on, let me get there, a motion to appoint Sarah Sham-Sudin to the Housing Partnership Committee for a term to expire June 30th, 2024.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Any discussions or comments?
Great letter. I think she's gonna fit really well with her background and.
Lovely, love the interest. It's great.
Love, loves the interest.
And the experience that she has as a lawyer, but also more with affordable housing. So, I think, I think it's great.
That's great. And, and I would just add, thank you for stepping forward and willing to volunteer your time and your expertise to an important issue, an important, the important work of that committee.
Love seeing new names come across it where you're like, who's she? That's great. Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, I'll move, I'll call the vote. All in favor. Motion passes, five zero, five being present. Okay. Next item is request to approve the minutes for our meetings on October 12th, 2021, October 18th, 2021, and November 29th, 2021.
November 9th.
November 9th.
It's the 29th.
I'm sorry, November 9th, 2021.
Do I take them separately or all together?
I can take a single motion.
So, I'll move the approval of the meeting minutes of October 12th, 2021, October 18th, 2021, and November 9th, 2021. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comments, corrections, discussion points on those three sets of minutes? Seeing and hearing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor. Motion passes, five zero, five being present. Okay. Next up is issues and correspondence. And I'm gonna start this week on my left. Sean?
Sure. Thank you, Alan. Just one item. This Thursday at Westboro High School is the Winter Choral and Orchestra Concert. It'll also be livestreamed. It's at 7:00 PM. I think I had it at 7:00 PM. Be livestreamed on Westboro TV. If you watch it, I'm guaranteed you'll be impressed by these kids. That's all.
Thank you. So, I, I wanna echo Kristy's comments in her town manager report for all the work done for the youngster clinics for vaccinations. They were, we participated as a family, and they were extremely well-run. Folks were helpful with questions. The flow was great. So, I, I just, obviously, it's critically important that folks get vaccinated and the overall, there was a great vibe. I think families felt very welcome and comfortable, and the process was, was quite smooth. So, thank you to all that made that happen. I also want to acknowledge, and I apologize, I don't have the names in front of me, but I had an opportunity to attend two different, well, Patrick may touch base on this. You're gonna talk about the senior center luncheon today?
I'm sorry, sir.
Are you gonna touch base on the senior center luncheon?
Oh, sure can, but you, you go ahead.
Well, so, so recently, five quilts of valor were awarded to five veterans in our community. And I apologize, I don't have those names. I can get them to Kristy. That's, that program is coordinated. It's a national program. It's coordinated through the Veterans Advisory Board. And Andy Two Rock plays a critical role in liaising with that national group. But these handmade quilts are given to any individual who has served in any capacity in the military. And they are absolutely beautiful. And to sit through one of those presentations and hear the story, it's, it's really very heartwarming. So, last Thursday, there were four that were presented to residents of the Beach Street, who live at Beach Street. And today, at the winter luncheon, the holiday luncheon at the senior center, Bob Sylvester received his. So, anyway, just wanna thank Andy for all of his work and the Veterans Advisory Board for supporting this really important program. And we have lots of veterans to be recognized. And we keep, we keep Teresa, who's the liaison there, very busy here in Westboro, given our veterans and our appreciation for them. And I think that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Ian?
Just a quick update. As your representative on capital expenditures committee, keeping with the budget theme, so we have met over the last couple of months, Kim can keep me honest, five or six times.
Six or seven.
Six or seven times. We're enjoying it so much, we keep meeting. No, but the, the, the work is, is going well with our improved process on cap expenditures. The changes have been put in, and we continue to make improvements there. But you'll see that in your budget books. But the committee has, I think, done their work well. A lot of good discussions, both for this year, but also looking out over the next five years and, and beyond. And so, look forward to discussing it. And we'll see what happens with what came out from capital expenditures as we go through the budget process forward. But I do think we will have additional meeting that we talked about on cap expenditures as some of this goes through the discussion purposes. But for now, we have presented, finished the work to present what goes into the presentation to the town manager to put for her recommendation in the budget book. So, thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you. Patrick?
Yeah. I just, thank you, Shelby, for talking about what happened at the senior center today. It was very inspiring. And Bob Sylvestry, I'll just let folks know, he was, he was emotional. And it was, it was a really great, you know, group there, very well-attended. And, you know, people really celebrated and appreciated him for what he, his, his service to the country. Just one comment, Youth and Family Services is reporting an increase in regards to the number of families that are participating in the, in the holiday family store applications, significant increase. And I would encourage anybody in the town who is interested to, they're taking donations. So, please feel free to call, contact the Youth and Family Services office to, to donate.
And they're specifically looking for gift cards.
Gift cards, correct.
Right? That they're not, because tail end of COVID, they're not doing the physical store.
Gift cards.
They're doing gift cards. Okay. For myself, just.
Actually, Alan, just a real quick one on this. And make them, the, the gift cards should be small increments. Twenty-five dollars or less are appreciated. So, allows them to manage it more effectively.
Yeah, they're looking for ten, ten to twenty-five dollar.
Ten to twenty-five. Okay, great. Okay. So, for myself, this week, just a, a note. Shelby, to my left, had been serving as the select board's representative to the trustees of War Memorials, an important committee in town that plans and. in town that plans and manages and maintains all of the war memorials in front of our public buildings and in the, in the cemeteries. Under Massachusetts general law, that is actually a role that is prescribed to the chair, and so we've made that transition, and I will now be trying to fill her shoes on that committee, and so, I wanna thank you for your service on that committee, and, you know, I look, I look forward to being more involved with it.
I forgot one item, if I may.
You may.
So, just for the board's awareness, the CPA exploratory committee is wrapping up its work, timing is everything or not, and it's anticipated that it's, the recommendation and a presentation to the board would be, would take place mid-January, mid to late January, so Alan and Kristi, Jen Doherty, the chair of that committee, will reach out and, and try to figure out the best timing of that, of that presentation.
Okay, great, thank you. On that, I will entertain the.
We will, in executive session.
Motions to move into executive session.
And we only need to do the second part, so the chapter 30A, section 21A7, so not any of the collective bargaining.
Okay, so I'll move to enter into an executions, executive session of Massachusetts general law, chapter 30A, section 21A7, to act under the authority of the select board to approve executive session minutes.
A second?
Second.
Okay, this is a roll call vote.
Do you want to do your thing?
Oh, oh, sorry, oh, I declared that an open meeting would have a detrimental effect. I had declared that an opening would have a detrimental effect on the board's bargaining position, and approval of executive session minutes are meant to be done in executive session, the board will not be reconvening an open session. Do I have a second to the motion?
Sean had the second.
Second. Moved and seconded. Patrick?
Oh, oh, sorry, roll call, yes.
Roll call.
Johnson, yes.
Edinburgh, yes.
Marcell, yes.
CEO, yes.
Thank you very much, Westboro TV, and the public for watching, we are adjourned into executive session.